Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the order. City of Wheat Ridge Planning Commission for June 6th, 2012, 2019. Thank you, the roll call of the members, please.
Melissa Antle.
President.
Will Kearns.
Here.
Daniel Larson.
Here.
Janet Leo.
Here.
Richard Peterson.
Here.
Jaheen Sembai.
Here.
Vivian Voss.
Present.
Scott Ohm is absent tonight.
The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. My name is Dan Larson. I am the, I will be your acting chairman this evening. Our regular chairman, our full-time chairman is, Scott Ohm is away this evening. First order of business, is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
So moved.
Second? Are there any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda? So we'll call for a vote.
Oh, oh Vivian, you're sitting in a different spot.
Oh yeah.
So, that's okay. That didn't make sense.
See what happens when the chairman is away?
Yeah, so it's actually, motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, is there a motion to approve the order of the minutes for May 16th, 2019? Motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Are there any additions or corrections to the order of the minutes from May 16th? Seeing none, can we call for a vote?
Motion passed seven to zero.
At this time, I'd, this is the time when any person would like, that would like to speak on any subject, not appearing on tonight's agenda. If there are any people in the audience that would like to speak, please step forward. Seeing none, I'd like to conclude, oh sorry. No one signed up. I didn't think so. Thanks, excuse me. Thanks, Scott. This would conclude our open public forum. And I'd like to welcome the members of the public and ask that you respect any statements made by the staff, the applicant, my fellow planning commissioners during the tonight's proceedings. It is important that the public meeting be conducted in a dignified and respectful manner. Please do not clap, yell boo, or make commentary from the audience, or otherwise disrupt tonight's proceedings. I'd like to open the, tonight's public hearing for case number WS 1902. An application filed by John Roach for approval of an eight lot major subdivision for property zoned mixed use neighborhood located at 10191 West 38th Avenue. We need to start by swearing in anybody who plans to speak on this, this particular issue. Would the applicant's staff and anyone from the public who plans to testify on this issue, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in this matter as you know it? Thank you. And we will now proceed to the staff report. Scott?
All right, with that delay, we will get started. I am Scott Cutler. I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. We're here to hear case number WS 1902, which is a request for approval of a major subdivision at 10191 West 38th Avenue. I'd like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the subdivision regulations, and this digital presentation. Properties within the city of Wheat Ridge, all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore the planning commission has jurisdiction to hear the case. This is a 2018 aerial view of the property. It's located on the north side of 38th Avenue, about a block west of Kipling Street, and just east of Lena Gulch. It's about just under half an acre. There's currently a single-family home on the site. And the surrounding area is a mix of commercial and residential. There's a lot of commercial located on the 38th Avenue and Kipling Corridor, multi-family assisted living facility to the south, and then more single-family homes and duplexes to the west. The zoning in the area is a bit of a patchwork. The site itself is zoned mixed use neighborhood, and it's surrounded by commercial zones on 38th Avenue and Kipling Street to the east, south, and southwest. And then it transitions to residential uses to the west. So before we get started on this case, I just wanted to give a reminder to all of the planning commissioners and folks in the audience, subdivision is a reconfiguration of lots, tracts, or parcels for sale or development. So it creates, removes, and defines property lines. It allows cities to evaluate the right-of-way. So in this case, we'd be looking at the 38th Avenue frontage. And it also allows the city to evaluate civil documents such as drainage documents, traffic, utilities, things like that. It does not change the zoning. The zoning is mixed use neighborhood. We're not looking at a zone change tonight. It does not change the permitted uses. Mixed use has a wide range of permitted uses, which I'll go into in just a second. And it does not look at the site design or building placement. That's actually a separate process called a site plan. So the request tonight is for an eight lot subdivision, and four duplexes with separate ownership are proposed. Each lot is about 2,400 to 2,500 square feet. And then there will be access easements for the driveway, utility easements, and drainage easements platted as well. So this plot is two pages. The first page, obviously impossible to read, but it is a, includes a legal description, signature blocks, vicinity map, and easement notes. A higher resolution document can be found in the staff report. This is the plat map. This shows the configuration of the lots. Like I said, it consists of eight individual lots with a central access and utility easement, and then a four-foot strip of right-of-way dedication along 38th Avenue is being dedicated for the construction of a sidewalk. Drainage easements are located on the eastern and western property lines, as well as between the southern and northern group of lots. And then a small portion of the extreme northwest corner is dedicated as a Lena Gulch easement. Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, so we sent the application on referral to outside agencies such as fire and water, as well as completed an internal review, public works and planning. No concerns were raised from outside agencies, and public works and planning have found the plat and the site plan to be approvable. Civil documents are currently under review by public works. There was also a 15-day public hearing noticing for planning commission. Sign went on the property, and then residents within a 300-foot radius were notified. We did not receive any contact from the public. So with that, staff has concluded the request meets the subdivision regulations, and all agencies can serve the property at the developer's expense. Therefore, we are recommending approval of the subdivision, case number WS 1902. I'm available for questions if you have any, and the applicant is also in the audience.
And I will start by polling the commissioners for questions of the staff. Commissioner Peterson.
Yeah, just, I need a clarification of something. If I go to, this is, this is boilerplate to you, but it's not to us. If I go to suggested motions, it's on page four. And under, under conditions, could you please explain to us the subdivision improvement agreement, lot sale restriction covenant agreement? And then, I'm going to go to number three as well. The homeowners association covenants for review and approval by staff. Are there sort of standards that you look at, or is there, is it sort of a boilerplate thing? And what do these actually mean?
I can describe each one. So the subdivision improvement agreement, that's an agreement that's signed after the plat is approved, assuming city council will approve the plat, which obligates the developer to construct the public improvements. So anytime there's a subdivision under review by the city, that's our way of getting potential improvements to the frontage. So in this case, 38th Avenue does not currently have a sidewalk, and the developer would be responsible for constructing the sidewalk. So that agreement specifically outlines the obligations of the developer. It also outlines obligations to construct onsite improvements. So in this case, there's a common drive through the middle of the site, as well as a pedestrian access into the site, that the developer is responsible, and that's all outlined in that subdivision improvement agreement. The lot sale restriction covenant agreement, that's something the city requires for any townhome development. And that is basically an assurance that, you know, if the economy tanks and the developer runs out of money, that there are certain things that will be built, I guess, regardless of if the rest of the subdivision is built. And it also restricts the developer from selling lots that don't currently have access. So if there's no drive and someone buys like Lot 8, for example, which doesn't access the street, that's not a good situation. So we only would allow the sale of those lots once the public improvements that allow, that lots be accessed are built. Because otherwise, you could have a paper subdivision where you've got lots for sale that no one could access. And then the HOA covenants, this is specific to sites with common maintenance areas. In this case, we've got the driveway and some common drainage elements, and that's just an assurance to the city that those will be maintained. Those documents for something like this site, which is relatively small, can be pretty short. It just has the list of obligations of the HOA, and that's, that's it. So in this case, it would be likely common driveway and drainage.
So, just, I just have one other question, and it too is kind of a clarification, and it might not be for you, it might be for the applicant. What's the orientation of the duplexes? Is it built on lots one and three?
So there are duplexes, and I'll go back to the slide, maybe to get a better idea. So yes, there would be adjoining, one building would be on Lot 1 and 3 and split down the middle, 5 and 7, 6 and 8, and 2 and 4.
Commissioner Sembai?
Scott, do we, I mean, as commissioners, in this particular application, do we care about parking or garages? Or we, do we get to ask those questions in this particular?
For this particular case, no. It's just for the plat. And that, that actually all follows under the site plan review, so we wouldn't be able to approve anything that didn't meet the minimum requirements.
Commissioner Antle?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Voss?
Yes, so you did say there was neighborhood and notice, and there was no meeting held? There was just?
So for a subdivision plat, this is the first public hearing.
But are people actually in the vicinity notified that this is the public hearing for that particular site?
Yes.
Okay. Only by the sign that's on the property, or?
No, mailings go out to property owners within 300 feet of the property, and that includes if there's an HOA tract, an HOA would be notified.
All right, thank you. And on page three, West 38th Avenue from Lena Gulch, the third paragraph roughly. Could you explain this statement, this paragraph, and how it relates, why it relates?
This might be a better question for Mr. Dave Brosman, who's in public works. There is an active plan for redevelopment of that intersection, including some street improvements and sidewalks.
Mr. Cutler is correct. There, there will be a project that essentially runs from, just to the east side of Kipling to about Lena Gulch. And public works is currently redesigning that particular area, and this property falls within that, that area. So that's, that's essentially what this is saying is, we're going to be taking fees in lieu of some of the required infrastructure for the right-of-way improvements, because the city's going to be constructing this all as one project rather than having it built piecemeal. Because that way, there's continuity from beginning to end. But we're still in the design phase, so we're, we're working through those things.
Can I ask, is it just curb and gutter? Are you redesigning the whole intersection, or just the amenities?
What, what we're doing is, we're trying to fix the, the traffic situation at essentially eastbound 38th to northbound Kipling. So we're adding extra turn lanes, and in order to accommodate those extra lanes, the infrastructure has to be completed further to the west. So that's, that's essentially the ultimate goal here, is to fix the, the traffic along 38th Avenue and have it flow better on northbound Kipling.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
And then another question is page three. You refer to, on the parkland dedication, you refer to urban renewal area. Which urban renewal area is this?
I'm not sure of the exact name, but I know that it stretches up northbound on Kipling Street. So it includes most of the Kipling Corridor.
The Kipling urban renewal, then?
Yeah, it has an official name, and I'm not sure of the title, though.
Okay, that would probably be interesting to be helpful. And then why are they not having any park, just because of the limitation of the acreage?
Yes, so the site is only, it's a little bit under half an acre, and it's also adjacent to the rec center. So in this case, they're paying the fee in lieu instead of dedicating a separate park.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Leo?
Yeah, I have a question on the, the subdivision map. On Lot 7, it says that the easement, you'll have to explain this to me, because I don't know a lot about the floodplains or anything, but it says the easement is being released in its entirety. And I'm not sure, how does this affect the floodplain? And are there any federal, any other floodplains under federal jurisdiction? So what's going on in that Lot 7?
I think I can answer that. Essentially, what, what's going on is the, the drainage way easement was, back in the day, much wider than it really needs to be. The Lena Gulch was rechanalized. I'm trying to think, I'm not sure I was here then, but it seems to me it was like the late 80s. So what happened was, the easement remained that width, but the actual channel itself shrank. So we discussed this with our current floodplain administrator, and he suggested reducing the size of that easement to make the land more, more usable, while not impacting anything to do with the floodplain, floodway, the functionality of Lena Gulch, or any of that. So he approved the, the new realignment. And in, in essence, what this is demonstrating on the, on the graphical portion of the plat is, we're, we're just reducing the size, but we're not, we're not getting rid of the entire easement, just a portion of it.
So that's only the easement. Where does the floodplain come in, on the floodplain?
Well, if you look, if you look close, I know it's probably hard to see on your, on your document, but there's, there's a line that, on the very northwesterly corner of the, the property, that's where the new easement boundary will be. And the actual channel is about 20, 30 feet to the northwest of that line. So there's, there's plenty of actual buffer between the, the easement line and the channel itself, which you can't really see on here. You'd probably see better on an aerial, but, yeah.
So, so if you were to overlay the floodplain map on top of this, it wouldn't go beyond that small portion of the, is it?
The current floodplain map would go to where that, the southerly line, the dash line is today. And what we want to do is, we want to back that up to the northwest in a more logical manner, since the, the channel itself has been shrunk, so we're trying to make the, the easement not overly encumbering under the property when it doesn't need to be. Because the, the channel is like 50 feet to the northwest of where that line is. Does that make sense?
Well, I understand what you're saying, but there is a floodplain map.
Correct.
And so what I'm, all I'm saying is, is that overlap into Lot 7? The floodplain itself?
The, the floodplain does not. No. It's, it's down in the channel where it was, where Lena Gulch was rechanalized. This is just simply an easement that's excessive from the firm maps you're referring to, yes.
Okay, so the easement, I understand, but I just wanted to clarify that the floodplain is not in?
No, we wouldn't be impacting the FEMA floodplain or floodway, either one.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Sorry, Commissioner Kearns?
The four-foot sidewalk right-of-way dedication on 38th Ave. Seems like a bit of a bare minimum, especially if it's attached to the roadway. Does this four-foot stipulate that it's going to be a four-foot sidewalk? Or do you think during the reconstruction, we would have an opportunity to make it a wider sidewalk?
No, actually, we're, we're looking at a six-foot detached sidewalk with a six-foot tree lawn. And, and all we need to accommodate that is an additional four feet of right-of-way.
Right, thank you. No other questions from me.
No questions from the chair? Would staff like to respond to any of the, any of the other questions?
No, I believe we did.
Can I just clarify something real quick? So, I'm sorry, Mr. Brosman, you said that there would be a six-foot sidewalk? Isn't the city standard at eight foot? Or is it depend what area you're on?
Correct, it depends on the corridor. This particular corridor by our street scan manual is six and six. It's six-foot detached sidewalk with a six-foot tree lawn.
So like, it's on the collector? Is a six-foot where arterial would be at eight foot?
Well, it might even be 10-foot, depending on where, where it is. Yes, like Wadsworth will have a 10-foot, but, yeah, it depends on the corridor.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? That concludes the staff presentation. We can now hear from the applicant. Is the applicant present tonight? Would you like to make any, any statements? Okay, the applicant chooses not to make a statement this evening. Let's move on to the citizens' forum. Are there any citizens that have signed up to speak this evening on this issue?
Good evening, my name is Jan Rose. I am the homeowner immediately to the west of this subdivision. I am the 10221 West 38th Avenue. This proposed subdivision is at 10191 West 38th Avenue. I am the buffer between this subdivision and Lena Gulch. I am what stands between the flood and this subdivision. I have a rack of 24 solar panels on my roof. I'm concerned about the 50-foot bulk plane, and the fact that these are 2,500-square-foot units, quantity eight, blocking my solar panels. I'm concerned that depending upon the two surveys that have been done in the four years since I've owned my home, that sometimes the property boundary is on my property beyond my fence line, which keeps my two dogs in place. I do not want that fence modified in any way during construction. I also am the only parking turnout lane on 38th Avenue between Kipling and Miller. There are literally no other places to pull out of traffic, other than in front of my house. I am concerned about construction vehicles parking in front of my house for extended periods of time during the construction. We have been relaying utility sewer, water, Xfinity, and Century Link cables as a result of the Quickimart, the, the Circle K, going in on the corner. And I have had an endless array of trucks idling all day long, spewing carbon monoxide 20 feet from my front windows for nine months, and they're still drawing lines in the street to do yet more cable lane. I wish the, the owner of the property next door had actually reached out to me. had actually reached out to me personally, since I am the last remaining single-family residence, the last remaining R1 in the two blocks between Kipling and Miller on either side of 38th Avenue. Would have been nice to be consulted. Clearly, I'm not going to be consulted, so I'm here in the earliest part of the public process, and I'll be back in front of the city council, to say that as a single-family residence zoned and built before the city of Wheat Ridge was created, I would like my rights to maintain, and that's the right to the quiet enjoyment of my property, the right to not have that pullout lane infringed upon by construction vehicles, the right to make maximum use of the 24 solar panels on my roof, and the right to make sure that my property is protected at all times. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? Seeing none, Commissioner Boss has an additional question for the applicant.
Yes, if you want to take the podium, I would like you to address the land as it sits right now. From what I can see, it's quite woody or tree or whatever that is. Do we get to ask what your plan is for?
Please state your name and your address, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Please state your name and address, please.
My name is John Roach, and I live at 10220 West 26th Avenue.
And your question?
In Lakewood.
All right.
And you want the address of the property or my address? Okay, thank you.
Well, my question was that the property seems visually fairly woody or full of trees, and I just wondered, are all those going to be down?
There's one big tree on the front of the property, on the west side of the property where the house is sitting now, the existing house. There's a couple of small trees, but they're on the backside of the property line. There's hardly any trees on, maybe one more along the driveway. So there's not a lot of trees that we would take out, but we would certainly have to take those out to put these units in.
All right, then what I was saying was border and not on the exact property then?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not sure when would be the time to hear the neighbor's concerns and if that's a one-on-one with you and her to address those concerns, or if this is appropriate to bring up right now?
I think that would be the appropriate measure at this point is maybe for me to meet with her personally and see what I can do to make sure that, you know, as this project moves along, if it does, how to accommodate her in any way. We would certainly do that within reason.
Well, Scott, then what are we doing here with this major subdivision if she has these concerns? And how does this affect what he might do to accommodate her?
I wanted to also respond to the residents' concerns as well in terms of height. Any residential building on this property is limited to 35 feet in height and has a required 20-foot setback for the third floor, if there is a third floor, and then a 15-foot setback for the first two floors. So that's, that's one. It's not a 50-foot height limit. It's a 35-foot height limit with that step-back requirement for the third floor. As far as what we're doing here tonight, this is an application for a subdivision. The property is zoned mixed-use neighborhood. It was rezoned in 2015. It's a use-by-right for the property. The property actually could be developed with additional units, but the applicant has chosen to develop with eight units. Just, I guess it makes sense for the site. So tonight's hearing is about the subdivision itself. It's about access. It's about the lot arrangement, and if it's a logical lot arrangement. But we're not here tonight to hear about the site plan design or architectural or anything like that.
Will we be hearing about that?
No. So that's, that's an administrative process with the city, and that's something that if there's a mixed-use neighborhood property, which this is zoned mixed-use, then it's eligible for an administrative site plan.
Well, I guess in 2015, making that mixed-use didn't take into consideration the neighbor's property and possible build-out when we know what an MUN can be built out to. So who's, where do we stand on getting this resolved before this becomes a build? Who has that ability to, just between the two landowners? Is that where it stands, and they have to fight it out amongst themselves?
I mean, if the planning commission recommends approval of the subdivision tonight, then it would go to city council, which has the final say for this type of development. I mean, I would recommend that, as we always do, applicants are in touch with the surrounding property owners and neighbors. Makes a lot of sense from my perspective. But, but as far as the process here tonight, we're listening to the subdivision. Planning commission will be required to make a recommendation of approval or denial, and then city council will hear this case on June 24th.
And can I just say a point of clarification? We're only weighing in on the plat, not what the site plan itself looks like. That has already been decided through an administrative process, and they are simply developing what they're allowed to by right per the zoning.
Almost. So the, the site plan can only formally be approved by the city if the plat is approved. It's in an approvable status, which means that staff has determined that it meets all of the requirements for the zoning, architectural, landscape. But that's not what we're listening to tonight. So you were correct on that point.
Commissioner Peterson? Yeah, just some quick background. None of us came here tonight to, prepared to discuss solar panels, I'm sure.
I did.
No, I'm sorry. Does the state of Colorado or the city of Wheat Ridge have any solar rights legislation? The place that brags about its 360 days of sunshine seems to me out of protected. Do they have such a thing?
Not to my knowledge. I do know, knowing folks in the solar industry, that Wheat Ridge has a pretty straightforward process. There's no architectural review for solar panels. I know a lot of cities actually review the architecture and location of where the panels go. Wheat Ridge, it's only through the building department. And I, unless there's a structural issue, they're generally approved. So from, from that perspective, I think, yeah, I don't have anything else.
There are, there are viewing regulations in, at least in Denver. There are certain sightlines that have to be preserved, right?
Yeah, so that's.
You have to be able to see the mountains from certain places.
Right, to my knowledge, and I know this because I'm familiar with the City Park Neighborhood, that, that view shed is a protected view. But in this case, the actual development would be on the east side of the property, residents' property in question. And again, that would not be taken into consideration in the plat review.
Right. So planners are present when the city talks about the site design?
Yes. So I was the case manager along with our planning manager for the site plan review. So we have reviewed several iterations of a site plan for this site and have it in a status where we feel comfortable bringing the plat to planning commission.
Okay. I'm not pressing you to do anything. I'm just going to ask a question. Is it possible for you to simply bring a solar engineer in to look the situation over and make recommendations or say, oh, everything's going to be fine?
That would not be a city requirement. If that's something that the applicant would like to do, then.
I don't know if it's a city requirement. I'm just asking if you could.
Since it's not like in our code or in our laws that, for which we serve, that's not something that we could do on a limb. So that would have to be an act of city management.
I understand that. I'm not asking you to do anything informally. I'm asking if you could somehow ask the city to consult a solar engineer to see what kind of problems might be created, or what kind of solutions might be met, or anything like that. I mean, it's not a question of, to me, it's not a question of laws and codes and regulations. It's a question of people who live here and the kinds of lives they have, which is what we're supposed to be watching out for.
Sure, and I agree. It's community, right? So that's certainly a question that we can bring up to our management and try to bring it around.
That's all I was asking.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I can make a quick comment on the solar panels. From what I see here, the solar panels are oriented south and west. I do not see solar panels that are oriented southeast or east.
Correct.
The development is going in on the east side. So I cite solar panels for a living on some of my projects. So to me, a 35-foot height limit is not going to affect the solar panel, your solar exposure as much. It could, it could affect it a little bit in the morning when the sun is first coming up. However, 35 feet tall is not that, to get the sun to clear that, I mean, you're going to be generating solar electricity for a majority of the day. So I don't see that this is really impinging on your solar exposure. The access, the access is, this parking lane, this is a bigger deal. And how you mentioned the construction impacts you're feeling from the construction traffic. It's hard because it's a public right-of-way. So if there's a parking lane there, technically, it's legal for anybody to park there and use it. To run a vehicle, like you said, some of these possible construction traffic are running their vehicles right in front of your yard for all day, probably diesel trucks, I'd imagine. So that, that's a problem. But I wonder if that's something that enforce, that you call law enforcement for. I don't know. The parking thing is, I think the parking thing is, especially the construction parking impacts are a larger issue than the solar in this case.
Could I add a little bit to that as well? During, part of the city's project that we have along there is undergrounding the utilities. So part of those vehicles are likely from us, and they're going to be done here hopefully with, we're hoping that they're going to be done like yesterday. It's hard, it's hard to control Excel Energy because they kind of work on their own timeframe, but they're supposed to be done by now.
They're on the sixth attempt to find the exact location of my gas meter. Six different times they have leaned into entry line.
Case in point.
Mark, the gas meter.
So hopefully they'll, hopefully that'll remedy some of, some of the construction traffic.
So it can be replaced by construction.
I'm sorry, that, yeah, and you should get hopefully a couple of months reprieve because our project likely won't kick off till next year.
Thank you, Mr. Brosman. Are there any other questions for the applicant or the staff? Are there any other comments from the public? Commissioner Peterson?
Yeah, on, on the basis of what Commissioner Kearns said, I withdrew my request to ask the city council to have a solar engineer show up. I didn't know we had one here, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. The applicant is released at this time, if you'd like to, if you'd like to make additional comments.
Just one statement is that, you know, our original intent was to develop responsibly anyway. When we came in, we could have put, we had the option of putting nine units there, and we broke it up into duplexes not to, to load that space any more than what we were already doing. And so, you know, moving along, with any, any problems that she has along the way, we will certainly address those and see to that she's looked after and that we're responsible. If it's anything that's a problem, I'll be there daily. It'll be my responsibility to see this through. And I'll work with, with her in any way. You know, it's within reason. The parking, any issues like that, any encroaching on her land or the fence line, we'll look out for all those things. I have a house full of dogs. So I understand the responsibility of taking care of those animals and making sure they don't get out. And so those are the things we'll look after along the way. And anything we can do to develop a good relationship with the, with the neighbors, we'll certainly do that.
Thank you. Appreciate the, your willingness to cooperate.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are any other, any other questions, comments from the commission, from staff? Hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion. Can I, can I get a motion on this, this case, please?
My motion to recommend approval of case number WS 1902, a request for approval of a major subdivision on property located at 10191 West 38th Avenue for the following reasons. All requirements of the subdivision regulations, Article 4 of the Zoning and Development Code have been met. All agencies can provide services to the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense with the following conditions. Prior to recrodation, the applicant shall pay the required fee in lieu of parkland dedication. The developer shall enter into a subdivision improvement agreement and lot sale restriction covenant agreement prior to the recrodation of the subdivision plat and prior to issuance of building permits. The developer shall provide homeowners association covenants for review and approval by staff.
Can I get a second? The motion has been seconded. Any further discussion? Then we will call for a vote on this issue.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Move on to our next case. We will now hear case WS 1903, an application filed by Redland for approval of a major subdivision with a right-of-way dedication for properties owned mixed-use commercial located at 4331 Vance Street in Wheat Ridge.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Stephanie Stevens. I'm the senior planner here at the city of Wheat Ridge. I'm going to present to you tonight, oh, sorry. One moment, I need to get the other presentation up. I'll start again. So, good evening, Stephanie Stevens, senior planner with the city of Wheat Ridge. Tonight, we're hearing case number, WS 1903. This is Town Center North, subdivision filing number three, located at 4331 Vance Street. It's approval of a major subdivision with right-of-way dedication. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case filed, the subdivision regulations, and the digital presentation. The properties within the city of Wheat Ridge, all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met. Therefore, the planning commission does have the jurisdiction to hear this case. So the lot is located, shown on the aerial on your screen. It's a 2018 aerial. The property's outlined, it's about two, a little over two and a half acres, 2.78 acres to be exact. Previously known as Lot Three of the Town Center North subdivision, which was originally subdivided in 2011. In the proposed subdivision, it would be called Lot One of Town Center North subdivision filing number three. So this is a part of a 7.8 acre project in full. This would be the third and final phase. So to the east of this property, which is vacant currently, is the other two phases that were constructed. that were constructed back in 2011. 2014 was when the approvals went through the city. That's Lot 1 and 2 that you see, they're senior affordable apartment buildings. The site itself is located approximately, approximately on the southeast quadrant of Wadsworth and 44th. It's primarily surrounded by some retail and restaurant uses on the northwest and south, the apartments on the east, and then there is some R2 zoning, so medium-density residential kind of located southeast of this across from 43rd Avenue. The site itself is zoned MUC, mixed-use commercial. It was zoned this way in 2010. As I stated prior, it was subdivided as Town Center North in 2011. At such time, a concept plan was also approved by the city. This facilitated development of the first phase, which was Lot 2, so the one just east, so southeast of the project. The second phase was Lot 1, which is closest to 44th Avenue, and that was approved in 2014. And what they're proposing here, we're not getting into site planning, but just so you know what the use is in general, is a market-rate apartment building of 140 units and four stories. So the request is for a one-lot re-subdivision with right-of-way dedication. The primary reason is to extend 43rd Avenue on the south side, which triggers a major subdivision that goes through Planning Commission and City Council. The right-of-way on that south side, 43rd Avenue, is 56 feet in width. It reduces the lot size accordingly, from 2.78 acres to 2.42 acres. There are also a public access easement for open space, emergency access easement and drainage easement that are being dedicated along with this plat. So this plat is two pages long. The cover page is our standard legal description, owner's certification, general standard notes, and vicinity map. The second page is the meat of the plat, and here you can see Lot 1 being reduced in size, previously Lot 3 of Town Center North subdivision. The major item to note is the right-of-way dedication that's coming through along the south side. That will be an extension of 43rd Avenue and get people across east to west. There's also an emergency access easement and a existing public access easement that lies on the site on the west side, which will get people out to the north to 44th, 44th. There's a drainage easement being dedicated just to cover the storm sewer, and then this area in green that's shown is a proposed to be dedicated public open space. So the entire project of Town Center North predated our parkland, our current parkland dedication requirements, and with the original 2011 subdivision, there was a waiver associated with parkland dedication which deferred parkland to this subsequent third lot. So with that, they're providing a public access easement that will be a publicly accessible open space, but will be very park-like, and it's greater than the 0.15 acres that was required per the original plat and concept plan. So since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application out on referral to firewater and sanitation, et cetera, as well as reviewed internally with Public Works and Planning. Planning and Public Works find the plat to be approvable pending some minor revisions, mostly technical corrections, and there are no outstanding concerns from outside agencies. Civil documents and site plan are also concurrently under review. There was a 15, 15-day public hearing notice for Planning Commission. We didn't receive any calls or letters, and again, that was, the site was posted, mailings were sent out to property owners within 300 feet radius. So with that, staff finds that the plat complies with the standards in Article 4 of our subdivision regulations of City Code. All agencies can serve the property, and the plat will facilitate development of the site in compliance with the approved concept plan. Oops, excuse me. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the subdivision, case number WS-1903, with conditions to address the technical comments that are outstanding between Planning and Public Works, as well as have the developer enter a subdivision improvement agreement prior to recrodation of this subdivision plat. Again, that's to get the public improvements in place for the perimeter and internal construction. And that concludes my presentation, but I'm glad to answer any questions you might have. The applicant is here as well.
Thank you, Stephanie. I'd like to pull the commission, we'll start with Commissioner Peterson.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Forty-third, I guess it's 43rd Avenue that's sometimes referred to as 43rd Drive. Where does it actually terminate? It looks like a road to nowhere.
Yeah, and it kind of is. So, on the west side of the site, you can kind of see it better on the aerial. There's an access easement that currently exists along the west side of Lot 3 that goes up to 44th. So the main purpose currently of 44th coming through is to get people back up north and circulate traffic with a decent amount of apartment buildings, just keeping traffic flow to get out 44th.
So, if that public access easement goes onto 44th, I assume it will be a right turn only? Because it would be impossible to do a left turn there.
Yeah, I'll let Mr. Brosman, but yes, there are...
Yes, that, that is correct. In fact, with this development, they're going to be elongating the median along 44th Avenue to prohibit left turns out of that, that drive.
And the, I guess, whatever that, the public access green space on the north end of that lot, I assume that's primarily for a buffer and a drainage easement, right? Since it, it's the parking lot for the, I think the new name is the Yummy Yummy Chinese Buffet.
Yeah. So it's actually, just kind of getting into site planning, but it is, it's open space. It's designed as open space, it will act like a park, a private park. There's a drainage easement, but all of the drainage that is comprised within Town Center North entirely is via an underground drainage system that lands in Lot 1.
Okay, so it's public access, but which public?
The intent is to provide parkland or open space for lots 1 through 3 of the project Town Center North in total.
Lot 1 and 2 have to cross Vance, which with increasing building will have increasing traffic. And lots 1 and 2 are both senior housing, right?
Correct. This is all, yes, correct. So that parkland dedication was prior to our time in choosing a location for the overall project.
So access to it is really gonna be pretty limited, really?
It will be somewhat limited. They are providing quite a few external sidewalks and ways for pedestrians to get around. Could also be a place for people to come from the surrounding restaurants and retail if they need a place to eat their lunch. But yes, it's, it's tucked in there.
Okay.
Commissioner Simba.
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Antle?
No ques-
Commissioner Ross?
I guess I have a few. So, the only reason we're extending 43rd Avenue to the west is for the development to have better access out to 44th and beyond.
I'll let Mr. Brosman touch on this, just so that I don't give you wrong information.
It's part of a logical transportation network, if, if you see the way that 43rd is, is aligned. The ultimate goal here is eventually, if the restaurant to the west should redevelop, go away, whatever, you know, 10, 20 years from now, maybe we make a connection to Wadsworth is really what, what the ultimate goal there. If the restaurant stays there, then we still have that drive aisle that exists to, to get people from the, the property to the south or to the west, back up to 44th. It just makes a logical street connection.
Who's paying for that extension?
That will be a responsibility of the developer, as part of the subdivision improvement agreement.
That's correct. And that they'll be building it to public street standards.
Right, and then, so, I, for the developer, probably asked the question, how do these buildings orient with their door entrance to the driveway between the bank and this facility, or along Vance?
The building entry itself?
Mm-hmm.
So, not getting too much into site design, since we're looking at the plat, but it's, it's a different configuration than what you see with Lot 1 and 2. There's a parking garage associated with this that's internal, and the building wraps on all four sides. So there will be entries on all four sides.
All four sides?
Correct.
That even from the parking lot of the Yummy Yummy? Going through that public, that public parkland?
Yes, yes.
And then where's the, is the division line to the west of this property at the center of that driveway between the property and the bank property? Where does the...
This is where the property line is, where it's shown on this aerial, and there's a access drive, which exists today, but it will be improved to street standards, both on the west side, and then the south will be to public street standards.
So that driveway between the bank and this property is down the middle as far as who?
That's correct, yes.
Commissioner Leo.
Yes, this is, I believe, still in an urban renewal area.
That's correct.
Lot 1 and Lot 2, I know, were urban renewal projects. Is Lot 3 also an urban renewal project?
So urban renewal had originally taken hands of the project, I think it was in 2008 and 2009, which is when the developer had come in and they were, they developed Lot 1 and 2. It wasn't somewhat in conjunction at the time, until the, the land was economically viable enough to hand off to the developer in full, but they are full ownership now.
Okay, and it is still in the urban renewal area?
Yes, it's in the Wadsworth urban renewal.
Is urban renewal, I would assume, but is urban renewal in encouraging this? I mean, are they, is this something that they want to see?
They are, they, they have no objections, and they said that it meets our Wadsworth urban renewal area plan, and they are supportive of this project, yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Kearns?
No questions.
Thank you, no questions from the chair. Any other questions for, Stephanie, one more question, please? Commissioner Peterson?
This, up here just left the room. I'm, I'm, I'm curious about 43rd, which spits me into this sort of weird street. Now, it, it connects with the, with the public access road, it's pretty much an alley. I'd hesitate to call it a street, a full-blown street.
It's being upgraded, for sure, although only on this portion of the property.
Okay, but it's not gonna be widened or anything?
It will be widened from what it is today, what you said today.
So, will there still be access to the parking lot? Right now, there's access to the parking lot of, I don't know, it's like Big Lots and Ross's and...
Yes.
So that access will still be there?
Yes, so currently, it's a substandard connection that was kind of a partially improved intersection there. We are working with, Urban Renewal is working with the Big Lots owner, as well as this developer, to come up with a pedestrian connection that can work there to get people from these apartments to the Big Lots safely. The intersection will also, if Urban Renewal funding can provide, will improve that pedestrian portion of the intersection and vehicular, to make it a fully improved intersection right there.
So, so is there any concern about the fact that that becomes a shortcut, well, maybe a long cut, to that three-acre intersection? I mean, if I don't wanna go right on Wadsworth...
The owner, we've been doing a lot of coordinating with the owner of Big Lots to the south, just to alleviate some of these concerns. He was concerned with his rear-loading area becoming that pass-through. We're working with him to install some traffic calming devices, speed bumps, signage, that kind of thing, to keep people out of there. It's really not a safe route, it's intended for loading, it's, it's not a safe route of travel for regular public access. So we're working on that with him, there is some concern there, but trying to get traffic out of there is our goal.
Yeah, I was, I understand the, the loading issue, I was more concerned with racing, taking my car and running through that parking lot, and then at that three-acre intersection, doing whatever I want, taking a left onto Wadsworth, taking a right onto Wadsworth, going in by feed, whatever, you know, whatever it is I wanna do. Is there any effort to control that? Is that a concern at all? If you have 400, if you have 140 apartments in that building?
Right, yeah.
That generates a bit of traffic. So I'm just wondering what the impact is on the parking lot? Parking lots are kind of free-for-alls anyway for driving.
Yes, there are some Wads, with the Wadsworth project, there's some changes happening to the three-acre intersection, I don't know about south of this property, if anything's happening. So technically, they could, I mean, that is public access easement by plat, so technically the public can go through there.
Right, and, and my last question about traffic and roads and so on. We're constantly told that CDOT controls access to Wadsworth, which is a state highway. So are you confident that you can extend 43rd and get CDOT to say sure? Because usually, people are pretty pessimistic about that.
No, you're correct, and it would have to go through the CDOT process, and I haven't really been involved with the Wadsworth widening project, but for all I know, that, that may never happen. I don't know, that was just speculation on my part by, based on the alignment.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Leo.
Yeah, I'm just confused, and it doesn't appear that 43rd is gonna go to Wadsworth. It looks like it's going to go to the western edge of Lot 3, and then have access north and south, is...
That's the current configuration, what would happen. Mr. Brosman was just talking about our ideal world in a city grid, so you can see the roads kind of to the east do that grid pattern. That's where we would connect out to Wadsworth if that building ever went away to the west. So that would be long-term future, there's no plans for it, but that would be our ideal situation.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was visualizing, right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any, any further questions? Thank you, Stephanie. Now, let's, let's hear from the applicant, is the applicant here tonight? Would you like to make some comments?
I don't have any prepared remarks, but I'm happy to take questions.
Okay. Are there any members of the public that will be speaking on this issue this evening?
No one was signed up to speak.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant at this point? Commissioner Peterson? Questions for the applicant? Commissioner Simba? Commissioner Antle?
No.
Commissioner Ross?
I do.
State your name and your address, please.
Tyler Downs, 1801 Broadway, Denver.
And would you mind raising your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in this matter as you know it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi. West 43rd, or 43rd moving westward, that's taking up some of your developer property, it looks like, from on the map?
It is.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Is the west 43rd extension something you wanted?
It was a request by the city for, to complete the street grid, so we're complying with that request.
All right, and then, the, the way I understood, the building is parking garage in the center with the apartments on all four sides?
Yes.
Much like the one that's going up south of Lucky's there?
Correct, just like the Edison.
Okay, and then all... Okay, and then, all doors orient to the east-west, north-south, or inward to the parking?
So the, the, the doors to the residential apartments would all be served off of a common hallway, which is interior to the, to the building. There wouldn't, there's only, I think, three or four direct-access apartments, and those face the publicly accessible park there. But they're all just for pedestrian access only. They would not be for cars, or, or anything else.
All right, and then, so the, if I heard correctly, the plan is for four stories?
Correct.
What are the other two right now?
Four stories.
They're both, okay. And is there any retail possibilities in this building at all?
We looked at that in prior iterations of our site plan design, and we just don't think it's a retail destination. And we, we just couldn't justify putting retail in that building, we think it's, I would hate to see a vacant storefront there, and I don't think I could lease the space to anybody. So we, we opted to keep it purely residential.
Plus, it would involve some kind of parking, street parking, parking lot, something like that?
It changes your construction type, it, it adds parking requirements, and we just felt that there wasn't retail demand for that particular location.
All right, and then, understanding the, Mr. Brockman's statement about extending the 44th Avenue median?
Yes.
And so that there's prohibitive left turn, right turn only, and that would be right at the, the alleyway?
Correct.
Okay, and I live in that area, so I'm trying to imagine, so that means from 44th westbound south into that alleyway, there is no turn in also. Because if you're blocking the east turn, you're also going to be blocking the south turn.
Correct. So the idea, as I understand it, from a city circulation standpoint, is they are, would like to encourage people to take the new intersection at Vance, and 44th, down to 43rd, and make the, the connection there safely, with a protected turn to access the rest of the center.
Doesn't sound like a protected turn so much as a controlled turn.
Yes.
But anyway, okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Hearing none, we'll now open up, thank you, sir. We will open up the public, any members of the public would like to speak on this issue? There are none. Are there any further questions for staff or applicant on this issue? Then we will call for a motion.
Motion?
Please, please read the motion, please.
I move to recommend the approval of case number WS-19-03, a request for approval of a re-subdivision with right-of-way dedication on property zone mixed-use commercial, and located at 4331 Vance Street for the following reasons. All agencies can provide services to the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense. The requirements of Article 4 of the zoning and development code have been met, the subdivision will facilitate development of the site in compliance with the approved concept plan.
With the following conditions?
With the following condition, the revisions requested by the Public Works Department related to labels, notes, typos shall be addressed prior to the City Council public hearing, the developer shall enter into subdivision improvement agreement prior to recorridation of the subdivision plat.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Further questions on this issue? And we will call for a vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to the next issue, this is case number WS-1901, an, an application filed by Riverside Terrace LLC for approval of a major subdivision for property located, for property zoned residential 3, to allow for 18 single-family townhome units located at 11661 West 44th Avenue. Staff presentation, please.
Hello again, Scott Cutler, City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. We're here to hear case number WS-1901, a request for approval of a major subdivision at 11661 West 44th Avenue. I'd like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the subdivision regulations, and this digital presentation, the properties within the City of Wheat Ridge, and all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, therefore, the Planning Commission has jurisdiction to hear the case. This is a 2018 aerial view of the property outlined in red, it's about one and a half acres, and it's currently vacant. It was formerly a single-family lot, it's about a block east of Tabor, and it's kind of between Tabor and then Robb Street to the east. Surrounding area is a mix of uses, to the west is a multifamily apartment building complex, to the east is some single-family, to the north are duplexes, and to the south is commercial. The current zoning kind of represents the mix of uses in the area that I mentioned earlier. There's residential 3, which surrounds the property, properties to the north are zoned R2, you've got planned commercial to the south, a bunch of mixed-use zoning to the west of Tabor, and then some more agricultural and restricted commercial, and more R3 to the east, so a real mix of zonings in the area. The request and purpose of this hearing tonight, it's a proposed 18-unit townhome complex across three buildings, so that means 18 townhome lots are being plotted, with four commonly maintained tracts. So those tracts include alleys, drainage easements, landscaping, and open space. The alleys are being plotted as part of this process, as well as utility easements and drainage easements. And the 18 townhome units are allowed under the current zoning, so keep that in mind. This is the cover sheet of the plat, lots of information on there, including legal description, signature block, and a lot table, which shows the lot sizes and tract sizes in the southwest bottom-left corner. This is the plat map, but I'll really show a zoomed-in version to give you a better idea of what's going on in the site. And I've added some color to this image to show the different areas of the site. You can see the three townhome buildings, which are outlined in orange, there are six lots per building. Then we have some open space and landscaping, which are all in the HOA tracts, on the west, kind of between the buildings, on the east side and north side, and this is not super accurate diagram, but it gets you a good idea of where the larger portions of open space are. There's also a drainage basin located at the north of the site in tract D. And like I said earlier, all the townhome units are alley-loaded. So the process for this project, we did refer it to all outside agencies, including the Fire, Water District, Sanitation, Excel, we did not receive any concerns from the outside agencies. We also did an internal review, Public Works and Planning have both found this plat to be approvable, it meets all our city standards, including the R3 development standards, and civil documents and site plan are currently under review by Public Works and Planning, and those comments are being wrapped up shortly. There was also a 15-day public hearing noticing for this hearing, we did not receive any contact from the public, other phone calls or letters received. And that was, again, a 300-foot radius, like is required for all subdivisions. So, my conclusions, staff has concluded the request meets subdivision regulations, and all agencies can serve the property, it will allow the development of the site under the current R3 zoning to proceed. For those reasons, staff is recommending approval of their request, and I've also included some recommended conditions of approval in the staff report, including the approval of a subdivision improvement agreement. I am happy to answer questions, I also see the applicant is in the audience, and he'll be available for questions as well.
Thank you, Scott. We'll start with the commission's questions. Commissioner Peterson?
Yeah, I just want to, if you would, just, I'd like you to draw me a picture, but I don't think you can from where you are. Where you talk about the easements, and there's a paragraph that says, "The unique feature of this site is the potential for cross-access with an adjacent proposed development at the northwest corner." I assume that's the A1 zoning area, it's like a field?
It is, so if we look at the map, it's the property to the northwest, that was recently under consideration for development, and if that project moves forward, which it has not been, you know, fully resolved at this time, there would be a potential connection to that site.
And, and this is where the picture comes in, what would that look like, that cross-access between those two hunks of land?
So, if I go back to this map, you can see how this alleyway, tract, tract C actually touches the border of the site. And so, on the other development, if it were to move forward, there would be a corresponding tract on that side where the alley would line up. And we would, the city would request that there be a continuous drive, as well as sidewalk connection, to that adjacent site, if it, if it moves forward.
So, yeah, it's all speculation, so if it moves forward, there's access from the east into this property?
Correct.
The entrance drive?
So, the entrance drive, this is 44th Avenue on the south.
It's on 44th, right.
The entrance drive will connect to 44th Avenue, alleys, alleys, and then if this project moves forward, this alley would continue into the adjacent site.
Right, and then there'd be another whole development over here, and it would have access on to whatever's west of that, right?
Correct.
Okay, so what does it look like if there is no development on that other tract, on that other hunk of land?
So, this is something that actually came up with the Fire District, and maybe Dave will be able to chime in here, too, but the Arvada Fire District, which this, this property's actually in the jurisdiction of Arvada Fire Department, they would require, if this neighboring project were to not move forward, Arvada Fire would still require a, a fire truck turnaround on that site. So there would be an easement dedicated by separate document, in the event that this doesn't move forward, that would basically plat, or put an easement into place, permanent easement, for the fire trucks to turn around on that site, and that would be a very small portion of the neighboring property. But that, that's not included in this plat?
No, no, I understand that, I'm just trying to, things need contexts to really understand them, and so I was just trying to figure out how that connected, and what it looked like if it never did connect.
Understood, so that would be-
Okay.
That would be like the, the situation if, if the project did not move forward on to the northwest, there would still be a fire turnaround that meets the Fire District requirements, and that's actually been signed off by the Fire, Fire Marshal there in the event, for whatever reason, that, that development does not move forward.
Okay. Okay.
Commissioner Simba?
I have a couple of questions, one just interest, it said the outbuildings in the home were demolished in 2019, do you know when that actually was?
I don't know the exact dates, after winter, the applicant will probably know better than I do.
Is the developer responsible for the streetlights?
Yes.
Yes, they are, and they're going to be installing pedestrian lights along the sidewalk as well.
And then, the other, one other question I had was about the bus stop standards, is that dictated by RTD?
It is, we're going to have them, but we're going to have them reconstruct that, that bus stop to, to meet the current RTD standards, and in fact, we're going to have them enlarge it slightly to accommodate a shelter should they desire to have that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Antle?
I do questions.
Commissioner Ross?
I do, and, so this is zoned R3, and it's going to stay R3, and that allows for up to three and a half stories?
It's a 35-foot height limit?
35-foot, right. And then, I would question, instead, this always paying for, in lieu of park, just seems to, I don't know, we need parks, we don't need the gravel, the asphalt, and the straight-up and down housing, I think we need some parks. Can we not make that crossover more of parkland? Does it have to be drivable, can it not be walkable?
So it's, it would be both, and actually, if you're, if you look at the screen, this entire half, northern half of the site, the only paved portion of that would be this section of alley, everything else would be an open space connection to allow for more continuous open space. So even though this is all in green, there's pedestrian pathways and passeos and landscaping in these areas that would potentially connect to this site, but they also connect around to the front of these buildings, so it's, it's a usable amenity.
So why is this not considered parkland, then?
So, for the purposes of parkland dedication, that would become a public park that's owned and maintained by the city, and often, our Parks Department doesn't want to take on, I guess, irregularly sized or embedded, or, you know, developments of this scale, it's just a very small amenity to maintain, and they would rather see something like with Stephanie's presentation, where it's a larger, developable, public amenity, that's significantly larger than this entire site, as opposed to something that's really small and embedded in a private development. So, there are examples where, you know, the, the Parks Department has developed new parks recently, but, but in the cases of these developments, it makes a lot more sense, just from a maintenance perspective, to have it be a privately maintained amenity versus dedicated to the city, which would require a subdivision and usually an act of council to approve a public park.
All right, last question, where do the fees in lieu of park fees go?
Those, I actually don't know. I will let someone else respond to that.
So those are controlled by our Parks Department, and they basically go into a fund that would then support a public park in the future that they would be able to maintain. So as we get enough developments come in that require enough parkland dedication, we get the city parks that we're looking for.
Sitting here on this dais, I have not seen a lot of that happen lately, on most developments, they've all been fees paid in lieu of park.
So I think the way we would see it happen is through the fees in lieu, I don't know if we would actually see the park itself come before you, because it would then be taken on by a city ownership as a city property, and it would then get developed as a park. So I don't think that would require it to come before planning commission. So the actual public park aspect, I don't think you would get to see that until it's come to fruition.
And then, the, so some of the fees get used on existing parks as needed for?
I, they might, but I think they're specifically reserved for future parks, for the parkland dedication, correct?
Just acquisition and-
Only new, yeah.
Okay, okay, I'll take that up, maybe with Lauren a little more than-
Okay, I'll bring it up to her as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Leo? No questions, Commissioner Kearns?
Quick question. We have 18 lots in, proposed here, at what point, how many lots does it take before we require two accesses instead of one?
I don't, that, that may be more of a Fire Department requirement, and it also depends on how far the lots are from the street, so usually-
And the Fire Department had no, the Fire Department had no comment on that?
No, so they've signed off on this plan, and then if, for, like I said, for whatever reason, the adjacent development does not go through, there's an alternate design that allows a turnaround on the adjacent property, and Arvada Fire has been good to work with on, on that regard, they've, they've approved this plan, and we'll, we'll continue to work with them throughout the building permit process if this is approved.
That's all I had.
Commissioner Ross?
The property adjacent to the west, is that not an MUN property?
Which property are you referring to?
The one with the crossover possibilities?
So- So that property was, I guess, back in April, approved as a planned residential development. So it's actually zoned PRD.
They don't have anything on there.
The maps just haven't been updated.
All right.
So the only MUN parcel is over here, west of Tabor.
Okay. So the PRD has been approved on that vacant land there?
The rezoning itself was reviewed by city council, but there are still other elements of that that have not gone forward. So in the scheme of this whole thing, this is the first planning commission hearing for this case. This is being reviewed separately and would have to go before city council as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, from my own information, can you tell me anything about why this is called the Fightmaster subdivision?
Dave, do you know?
I believe it was named after the Fightmaster family, is where the name comes from.
Thank you.
It was developed in 2002, and the two brothers developed it after their mom passed away.
So it was a family name, then?
Yeah. Fightmaster was her name, and her mother lived in a big lot that's been built now.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Scott. Would the applicant like to make a presentation or any comments?
I believe there were two questions that I'd like to ask, please.
Okay. Please step to the mic, please, and state your name and address.
My name is Stephen Sundberg. My address is 9640 West Chatfield Avenue in Littleton.
And would you mind, I'm sorry, raising your right hand? Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear to tell the truth in this matter as you know it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So I believe one of the questions just related to the demo when it occurred. So right after the winter season, we went ahead and closed on the property March 15, and started asbestos abatement, got clearances through that, all the permitting for demolition, and then that occurred at the beginning of April, I believe. The only other question, just, I believe there was open space we worked through, fire distance, so extension of the fire length itself, while been confirmed and approved. And just to note that the other plat with the connection to the west, we anticipate coming to a planning commission on that one within the next month. We do have just an approvable status, so I think we're one common way. So we'll have that back to you guys maybe the 24th, or whenever the next one will be, I guess the 20th.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
I do.
One more. Commissioner Voss?
You explained that when on the demolishing and the asbestos abatement and all that, what was the purpose of demolishing everything then?
Be it a cleared site, we were in the position where we had to close on the property. So be it for the proposed development that we're working through, be it another single-family home, everything was too outdated for us to, for example, redevelop it even just to a single-family house. So we did have to, excuse me, clear the land and prep it for standards that we'd still be held to, even if it was a single-family house. Now, we did go ahead and do some of the things that we would be required to for this development. We provided all erosion control measures, kept all fencing, temporary fencing around. So it's in line with trying to keep everything pretty, at the same time prep the land for what we are looking to do.
So you did go ahead and prep land for something you were anticipating to happen?
Yes, ma'am, to a certain extent. With what was there, we wouldn't be able to do anything, and we were in a position that we had to close with the person we were under contract with.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. We'd like to hear from the public now. Are there members of the public that would like to comment on this issue?
I believe we did have someone signed up to speak as well.
I'm sorry?
I believe we had someone else signed up to speak, too. I just haven't grabbed the sheet yet.
Okay. Oh, there we go. Thank you. And so would anybody that is prepared to speak this evening on this issue, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in this matter as you know it?
I do.
Thank you. Could you state your name, please, and your address?
My name is John Clark. I live at 4665 Swadley Street here in Wheat Ridge. I am, in fact, a third-generation Wheat Ridge resident. And after what I've seen going on in the past few years through planning and through council, my kids will not live in Wheat Ridge. So three generations is all you get, guys. I'm taking my kids out. Do I have a problem with this property? I do. Absolutely. It didn't start with this property. It started all the way over on the other side of Tabor. You guys heard that one. You approved it. I fought it. Went to council. I fought it. They approved it. And then we went to 4440 Tabor, which is, in fact, the address that you speak of that connects. And I fought that. I was within 600 feet of that, so I got a letter, and I went to the neighborhood meeting. I went to the planning meeting. I went to every council meeting, and I fought, and I fought, and I fought. And I asked my neighbors, "Why aren't you fighting?" They're just going to do whatever the hell they want anyway. That's what I hear. And it's not just my neighbors, guys. It's, I'm out in the public. I mean, if all you don't know me, it's because you're not out there. I mean, I'm a 4-H dad. I'm at the schools. I'm the SAC chair. I'm PTA president. I'm out there. I know, and I'm on boards, and I hear people, and I ask them, "Why aren't you fighting this?" Because the lady that was here that was fighting the development next door, she has no chance. She has no shot. I knew going into the Tabor property, I had no shot. But I still got to fight it. So we talk about, you know, I don't want to throw conspiracy around, but a lot of times on the news lately, we've heard the word collusion. And I have to, I have to stop and think, after years and years and years, I've been coming here a lot longer than some of you have been living in this city. And I go to city council meetings. And it's truly, if it's not a conspiracy, it's collusion between the developers and the staff, hired staff. We've hired people. They get paid to do this. We've elected officials, council members, we've elected them to do this. And then we've appointed officials on numerous boards and commissions. And to the public, I'm just going to tell you what the public thinks and what the public is telling me, there's collusion, and it's a conspiracy. And if I had the ability, I would probably be able to wrap you all up in some big RICO Act, along with council and mayor and staff. Unfortunately, I don't work for the federal government, so I can't bring the RICO Act around and charge you all with this big giant conspiracy that I know is going on. So I will say that I, in fighting the Tabor, I knew this was coming. I knew when they started tearing down this house, boy, they're pretty confident. They're going to literally buy a property and tear down a house, a standing house, because they know. They already know. Checkmark, checkmark, checkmark. We'll go to the city. We'll go to planning. We'll go to planning commission. We'll go to council first reading. We'll go to council second reading. And it doesn't matter what Mr. Clark over there on Tabor says, we're going to tear down the house. I can tell you when the house was stored, because I drive by there four times a day. There's a lot of heavy equipment over there. I know it costs them a lot of money. So as you're going to approve it anyway, here's what I'm going to ask. A, do not allow that road to go through to the next property. What that will do is, there's 44 units, according to the developer, 28 units, according to Zillow, 44 units, depending on who you talk to. That Tabor property, if in fact it is developed, is going to dump out onto Tabor. Tabor can take no more traffic. I'm on it four times a day, maybe six. It cannot take anymore. Do not dump these 18 out onto Tabor. Make them go to 44th. It's simple. 44th is four lanes, Tabor's two. Don't pile more cars on my street. It's already hard enough for me to take a left on 44th out of my house. I honestly think it's quite insane to say, "Well, this is just 18 units. This is just 44 units. The one before that was just 12 units." And for every unit and every development and every property, we say, it's not enough to worry about traffic. But now, all of a sudden, we got 280 units up at TOD, and we got these 44 and these 18. Guys, you just got to stop. You guys got to stop the collusion and the conspiracy. The people do not want this massive development. I've been fighting this Ag 1, the property on the other side of Tabor that you see as MUN, that was Agricultural 1. The L shape that this is going to dump into, Ag 1. I fought that. Property to the east of that, after the two single-family homes, Ag 1. So we're just wiping out agricultural land in Tree City to build density. And what are we getting for? $2,500 per unit? Literally, $2,500 per unit in lieu of? I'll be sure and tell my kids that there's, man, you know what? They gave $2,500 in lieu of a park. I was sitting in this very chamber a month, month and a half ago to city council meeting. They approved $95,000 to buy a lawnmower. Don't believe me? Look it up. 94, seven and change. It's a $95,000 lawnmower. $2,500 in lieu of park? Come on, people. You guys got to stop this insanity. I'm not, you know, I'm sure my time is up. I won't even go into what Kelly Bailey said at, I'm so riled up. You guys are killing me. You, council, mayor, staff, you're all killing me. We knew this was coming in November 15 of 2018, when Kelly Bailey said to this commission, she and her husband own the property that is for sale to the southeast where the drive connection would be made. She indicated that they like Mr. Lyons's project, which Mr. Lyons is the developer on the Tabor. He has been successful in the past with the city of Wheat Ridge, that's debatable, and they would like to work with him and have their parcel developed jointly with the property. So way back in November of 2018, we knew this was coming. This is not a new surprise. Don't act surprised, people.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
$2,500. I'll be sure and tell my grandkids, "We don't have a park, but they got $2,500 bucks."
Next speaker, please. Please state your name and address.
I'm Alan Hadiger, 4455 Sims. And I live directly east.
East of W.
Oh, I'm sorry. H-A-D-W-I-G-E-R. And I just want to say, I think this is a very, very good project. It's making the community a lot better, a lot more uniform. The only question I have is if we can get some kind of a deceleration lane off of 44th to turn into there, because, boy, during that, it would just cause a backup like you wouldn't believe in the evening. You know, if they stopped mainspeeding traffic on 44th to try to turn in and to come out, I'd really like to see that. And I'm sure you'd do your best. Thank you, guys. You guys have a nice night.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens who would like to speak at this time? Would the staff like to address any of the questions raised?
I don't have any comments.
Thank you. Are there questions for the applicants? The applicant?
I actually would like to add something. I apologize.
Please.
As far as the connections go, whether it's to Tabor or another connection on the 44th, often those are dictated by the fire department. So for commercial developments and larger residential developments, fire does like to see two-point-of-access or point-of-access with a turnaround. I think that the preferred option for the Arvada Fire District is to have two access points, and if the adjacent development does move forward, that's their preferred option. Otherwise, they would be acceptable with one with the turnaround in the northeast corner. So a lot of times, these connections are dictated by the fire district.
All right. Makes sense. Thank you. There are no further questions. I'd like to entertain a motion.
Okay. I move to recommend approval of case number WS-19-01. A request for approval of a major subdivision on a property located at 11661 West 44th Avenue for the following reasons. All requirements of the subdivision regulations, Article 5 of the Zoning and Development Code have been met. Four, pardon me, Article 4 of the Zoning and Development Code have been met. Number two, all agencies can provide services to the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense with the following conditions. Prior to recordation, the applicant shall pay the required fees in lieu of parkland dedication. Number two, the developer shall enter into a subdivision improvements agreement and a lot sale restriction covenant agreement prior to recordation of the subdivision plat. Number three, prior to issuance of building permits, the developer shall provide homeowners association covenants for review and approval by staff. And number four, an emergency access easement to allow the subdivision to function independently in the event that the adjacent parcel is not developed, shall be recorded by a separate instrument prior to the recordation of the subdivision plat.
Thank you, Commissioner Antle. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Further discussion? Questions?
I do.
Commissioner Voss?
On the conditions, number two, the lot sale restriction, can that be explained, what that means, lot sale restriction?
Yes. So that's similar to the condition that was put on the first plat that we reviewed, WS-1902. And that's, again, to prevent the sale of any lot that doesn't have access to a public street. So in the event that the development, you know, lost money and didn't move forward, we wouldn't have sold a lot to a person that would own something with no access and no way to develop it. So it's a prevention measure in place in the event that the construction ceases, and then it would require all of the roads to be built so that they could be accessed and developed in the future.
All right. And number four, emergency access easement to allow the subdivision to function independently in the event that the adjacent parcel is not developed, and that is the fire turnaround that you were referring to?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll follow up on that question. Is there a time limit on how long that easement agreement would be held back? The other parcel is being reviewed now, and it may be a while. Would that delay the recording of this plat?
No. So it'd actually go hand-in-hand, and then any future plat would potentially extinguish that easement. So they would be required to go hand-in-hand, and then if the adjacent parcel develops in the future, then that easement would be extinguished at a certain time, probably into the construction period to allow that fire turnaround to be accommodated by the new roadway, which connects to Tabor Street.
Thank you. Any other questions? Here we go. Commissioner Kearns?
I'd like to propose an additional condition be placed on this subdivision, and that's a condition for a westbound 44th Avenue deceleration lane to be made into the property access. As I see it, this property access is actually not going to be serving 18 units. It's going to be serving much more units if the Tabor Street development comes across our desk, as we might see later this month, it sounds like. So I think we need to account for more site traffic than is currently proposed on this, on this case. We actually- We actually need to be thinking about accommodating the site traffic for both of these upcoming, uh, developments.
So I believe our procedure on this is to, this would be handled separately as a separate motion?
Yeah, sorry. So you, you can vote on this as a amendment. So you can make the motion first for the overall that Melissa already, sorry, Commissioner already read aloud. Make the motion on that and then you can make an emotion for an amendment after that.
Wouldn't, just to, I mean, wouldn't you need to actually do a traffic study to determine if that's even warranted? So you couldn't necessarily with a motion require that they add this? Because we don't have the engineering expertise to require that as a condition of approval? I mean, I guess that's a question to staff, like what's the appropriate?
Well, looking at this particular development on its own, it wouldn't generate enough traffic to warrant a separate turn lane.
Which is why they're coming in with two separate applications. Essentially, this, you have to, I think we need to look at this as a overall site plan. This is, they're coming in later this month for this next development. They're gonna be connected. I mean, perhaps we need a, perhaps this requires a better look and a, and a larger picture look. And maybe it's a minor traffic study, maybe it's a traffic study for both these developments.
We can certainly, uh, request a trip generation based upon both developments if that's what the commission would like. And if that trip generation kicks off something bigger, we can require a full traffic study and, and see what the results of that is. That's typically the, the process. We go with the trip generation first and, and see if it, if it warrants a bigger look.
So we can, we can request, or we can-
Maybe, maybe-
Add an amendment that requests-
A trip generation study would, would be-
Generation study.
Definitely, uh, I-
As part of-
I think a more prudent approach rather than just simply requiring a, a turn lane without knowing the numbers.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kearns?
But eighteen units isn't, eighteen units is just, this is just a part of this. It's not, not seeing the, the whole picture here.
I, I agree.
So how, I guess, maybe we table this until we see the Tabor property, uh, development plan as, oh, sorry, rezoning, uh, subdivision plan as well. Then we can know how many units we're actually talking about in this overall development. And that's what we ba, would base the, the trip generation on.
Yeah, correct, 'cause right now, this, this particular development wouldn't generate more than, it, it'd actually be less than a one percent increase on Forty-Fourth Avenue.
Yes, like-
And, yeah, which is-
If you're assuming ten trips per unit, it's a hundred and eighty trips.
Correct.
However, if there's three hundred unit, or I don't know, um, a hundred units going into the Tabor development, then we're talking about something more, more impactful.
So the amount of units on the Tabor project is twenty-six. So there would be twenty-six plus eighteen mental math, the, that total number of units for both developments.
So we, we do have a motion on the floor. Commissioner Kearns, if you'd like to add an amendment, uh, after, that would be okay. But I, I, I believe we need to vote on the, on the, on the motion and, and, uh, because we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. We can have further discussion. But, and if there's a, an amendment proposed, it would come after, correct?
Okay, I guess I need to take my proposal off of the table for the deceleration lane and put a proposal on the table for a overall traffic study for both developments, Forty-Fourth Ave and the Tabor Street development. Let's just, let's, let's see this for what it is, which is a larger development than, they're, they're just splitting this in half to come in front of us.
Commissioner Kearns? I'm sorry. Commissioner Boss?
I'm, I'm wondering, why do we have to depend on a deceleration lane determination by city staff? Why not the residents who are, uh, expressing that concern? And they've asked for that. Why don't they get what they ask for? If they feel that it's warranted, they live there, they have this issue and concern, I don't think we need to wait for city staff to figure something out.
You have a suggestion?
Just do it. It be a part of the condition and-
As an amendment?
As an amendment to the project.
Commissioner Leo?
Yeah, I'm just concerned that we're anticipating, I mean, I know there's going to be another one coming up, but tonight we are addressing this one, just this one. And we can deny it, we can, um, you know, say, we can read the, uh, the, uh, how do you call it? The denial rather than approval and deny it. But I don't think that we should be considering something that is not on the floor.
That goes to the point that was made early on, that tonight we are simply looking at a subdivision plat. And, and these, these other issues, while they are important, they're not part of our business tonight.
So to Commissioner Kearns' point about potentially removing the one amendment and adding another, you actually would be required to vote on his first amendment and then he would be able to then introduce a second amendment if that fails. So you would still need to vote, then he could potentially introduce another motion. And then you could vote on that and have more discussion on that. But I think at this point, if we're no longer considering his first, I guess, additional condition, then you need to vote on that.
Who is never seconded?
Wasn't seconded.
Okay, I thought it was seconded. Okay.
The original, the original one was not?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Oh, did you? Sorry.
So if it was seconded, then we would need to vote.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm confused too.
Did you amend it officially to the motion to approve? Or did you withdraw it?
I don't remember.
It was never seconded. Janet, or Commissioner Leo seconded your motion. But his was never seconded.
Okay, then a vote would not be required.
I guess, how do we, how do we move forward? Do we move forward with looking at the decelerate, requiring the deceleration lane for this subdivision? Or do we table this subdivision to be re-approached when the next subdivision comes in later this month, it sounds like?
If, if you'd like to make a motion to that effect, that, that would be, that would be appropriate. Right now, we are considering the motion to approve. Uh, that has been seconded. And then if we'd like, if you'd like to discuss amendments to that, that would come after.
Okay. I, I have to say, I'm increasingly uncomfortable, um, voting on what is increasingly, uh, two proposals, but we only have one in front of us, so I'm agreeing with you. I, I think the appropriate way to handle this, I mean, I, I can't, I can't pretend that I know what else is going on in this area. All I can do is deal with this. But that doesn't seem like a smart thing to do when there's obviously something else going on. So I think this should be tabled. I don't, I don't know if we can, can we table a motion?
The, we can approve or, or not approve.
Yeah, well, I, I would strongly urge my fellow members to not approve and then table this until we have a bigger picture of what's going on out there. Uh, I, I don't think we need to call for traffic studies if there's nothing happening. And I think once we have the bigger picture, we'll have a better idea of, of entrances and exits and traffic patterns and traffic flows and, um, impact on neighborhoods and all the rest of those things. So I would encourage us to, um, vote no on this and then table this particular, uh, proposal.
Commissioner Leo?
I just have a question, if, if we deny it, if we deny it.
If we do not approve it.
Right, right, if we, right. Does it, can it come back or is it just?
So if you, if you do not approve it, you would be denying it? So the best route here would either be to, I think it would be either to withdraw or to vote on withdrawing the original motion. Then you would all vote against, vote that. And then you would bring up the new motion to potentially, to continue and go as a new motion.
I think the person is, I think the person who made the motion can actually withdraw the motion. And if it's okay with the person who seconded it, it's gone. I don't have my Robert's rules with me, but I think that's the case.
Seen a motion to withdraw yet. Still have a motion to approve, approve this subdivision.
That's what I'm saying. I don't think you need a motion to withdraw it. I think the person who made the motion can say, "I withdraw my motion." And if you check with the person who did the second and they say, "Yes, I agree, that's okay," then you can do it. I don't think you need to vote on all of that stuff.
So I withdraw my motion to ask for a deceleration lane?
Well, it would be my motion and whoever seconded. But I, I guess I have a question because this is clearly, this is now getting linked to a project that is forthcoming around Tabor Sheet. Could you guys give us a little background because apparently it's gonna affect the approval of this?
If, if I could say to that, some of us have been on the dais and approving the previous project that we're talking about now and some of you haven't. So some of us are knowledgeable of what that-
About the Tabor property?
Yes.
So for those of us that are new, could we just? I, because I don't, I don't know anything about it. Is it true that this will be, there is a parcel right there that is in process of being developed and it's something that will come to us in the near future?
So we can elude, we can tell you that as a yes, but we're not able to talk in full depth without being under a public hearing because of the quasi-judicial.
Okay, but there is another property, okay.
That's what Scott spoke to on the PRD, the, to a previous question. It's a PRD and it's just, he said it was coming to us later.
Okay, okay.
So previously voted on the zoning. And also just to acknowledge Commissioner Peterson, that I believe that's correct, assumption that you could withdraw your motion as long as the second is able to support that.
Commissioner Antol, are you interested in withdrawing your motion?
I, I don't really have enough information to kind of support the concerns that some of the other commissioners have raised. So I would move forward with the motion I made earlier.
If, if the commission votes to not approve, will we need to follow that with a motion to deny?
No.
It mean, if you do not approve it, that means you are denying it.
And it, our, generally, the way we operate is that if, if we move to recommend a denial, we need to include some, some justification. That's a separate motion.
That would be correct.
All right. So if, if we, if the commission votes to not approve, that would be the end of it. No further action would be needed tonight.
Correct, and then a, a recommendation of denial would be forwarded to city council to make a final decision. So that would not affect the city council hearing that's scheduled for June tenth, I believe. But it would just come in with a recommendation of denial by the planning commission.
Planning commission, they would see, they would see our denial without any justification, without any reasons, just a, a, a not approved vote.
Well, and they would see the conditions of approval or, or the reasons you gave as part of that motion.
Okay, okay. So the, again, the motion is on the floor to recommend approval of case WS-1901. This is approval of a major subdivision. That's the issue that we're, we're discussing. We've, we can read again the, uh, the recommendations and the conditions. If there are further questions on that, but I would suggest we, we hold the commission. Objections? Uh, let's go with the vote then. You ready? There we go.
Motion denied, four to three.
Now we need to make a motion to-
No, it just goes to council as a denied.
How do we get it back in front of us as a entire development? Is that just another, they have to reapply?
I don't believe, uh, we, we're allowed to look at two separate developments as, as a single development.
It's the same developer, it's the, the same developer owns both properties.
They, they are, they are being, they are being, uh, developed, uh, a, as you say, apparently by the same developer. But, um, as far as the city of Wheat Ridge and the planning commission is concerned, these are separate projects.
Okay. So how do we get the traffic study done for both properties since they are connected? Even if they are separate projects?
I believe we can make a recommendation to that effect.
So, uh, commissioners, um, in the event, and this is from the bylaws. Number twenty, voting section B, in the event of motion fails to receive a majority vote, it shall be conclusively be presumed that no action has been taken and it shall be required that a second motion be made, seconded and adopted by a majority vote indicating the definite action, either granting or refusing the requested action.
So we do need this second motion to deny. And to, in order to do that, we need some, some justification for this, uh, action.
It just says indicating the definite action, so I think that's up to you.
Well, then, does that mean conditions or just justification?
Or request for additional information possibly? Uh, traffic study, that sort of thing.
So I make a motion to request a traffic study for both develop, be done for both developments since the developments are gonna be connected.
So I think to be able to do something like that, you would have to continue to a date certain. You could, under the condition that further study is done.
Under the condition that a- Okay.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, re, can you restate that?
So you would continue to a date certain, so say the end of June for planning commission, um, to allow time. So usually when you continue to a date certain, you would act, you would give a reason for that as well. And you could say to allow time for further study. So you could do for, to allow time for a traffic generation study for the full-
Commissioner Kearns, I'd recommend that use that, uh, language.
So we make a motion, I would make a motion to adjourn until a further study can be-
To continue to date certain.
Until a further, a motion to continue until a further study can be.
But you have to decide on a date, a planning commission date. You have to assign a date to it.
It probably needs to be in the July planning commission because he just said that this next development won't even be ready until the end of June.
Until such time as the, um, adjacent development is reconsidered.
So I will say, um, the adjacent development is scheduled for a planning commission hearing on June twentieth, so two Thursdays from today. Um, and then July fourth is the next planning commission hearing, which is canceled, obviously. So the next one after that is July eighteenth. So if, if we want to hear, if we, if you would like to see those together, the date would be June twentieth. I re, I recognize that's in two weeks, but that's the earliest available. Otherwise, it would be getting towards the end of July.
Let's look at it June twentieth.
June twen, uh, continue, so we're, we're looking at a motion to continue until June twentieth because?
Because of-
To allow time.
To allow time for the, for the larger study to be conducted.
Yeah, I'd like to throw, I'd like to throw out something there, too. Two weeks is probably not a sufficient time to obtain the traffic study, so I'm not sure.
Can, can I ask a question as part of, it either is the planning staff review or transportation staff review, don't you never, normally do a trip generation analysis with each proposed project? And couldn't you produce a trip generation analysis and then compare that against standard warrants for adding new lanes or modifying traffic? You know, I mean, I think, I think maybe it's to be clear on, I don't think he's asking for, you know, this massive undertaking. It's just I think people want to understand what is traffic going to look like with these new developments, and does that meet the threshold for something like a deceleration lane or some sort of modification to traffic patterns on, was it 44th or Tabor?
And Tabor. And I think it's, with this amount of units, it's 44 units total, it sounds like, so that's a minor traffic study. That isn't a, that isn't a huge traffic study.
Yeah, typically, we, we look at these things as they come in as a standalone project. Now, I understand your concern about the connection of the two, but staff, when, when we received this application, the other one was being processed separately, and we hadn't discussed the connection at that time, so we didn't request any trip generation information. Well, the project is small, we wouldn't have normally done that. Obviously, with larger projects, yes, we always request traffic information. Up to 44 units, it may be sufficient to have warranted that, but again, since they were tracking separately, that didn't occur.
I think 44 units is enough to warrant minor improvements. We, we're not, it's not like we're going to get a signal or, or some, or extra lanes, but absolutely deceleration lanes, we're looking at stop control, pedestrian, we need to talk about even pedestrian access between these properties. And, and are these properties going to be connected via an emergency easement only, or will they have full vehicular access?
Oh, it'll be vehicular access. One thing I'll throw out there, and I know we're getting a little off topic being as this is a, a plot before you, but their, their entrance is actually, the drive entrance for this project is on the east side, so if you had a turn bay, it wouldn't work. You'd actually have to construct that on the easterly property and not in front of this particular development. So, that's not going to work. And if, if they even could build their decel lane, they would lose that whole south bank of buildings, that whole, one through six units, I think it was, that, that would have to be removed in order to accommodate a 12-foot turn lane.
So, I just pulled up the aerial view, and Davis, correct that proposed access point to the subdivision is on the extreme east side of this property? So, any sort of decel lane would directly impact not the property itself, but the adjacent property owner?
It would actually impact the gentleman who was requesting the, the turn bay, because his property is to the east.
It, it seems that, however, whatever magic we have to do, that we have to have both of these in front of us to get a total picture. And I don't even know if we can call for traffic studies until we see both of them and kind of figure out somehow if there are traffic problems. I just want to see how the traffic flows through them, and as I said before, I'm really uncomfortable with half a plan.
I think that's how the motion needs to read, is a motion for denial due to the condition of further traffic study based on the whole area.
The, the original discussion had been a motion to postpone until the next Planning Commission meeting, at which time the other, the adjacent parcel will be considered as a rezoning project.
Correct. If you were to not deny, and then it went to council and continued to get denied, then they would not be able to come back as one. So, this is more of a continuance to combine the applications.
Both of these projects are subdivision projects, correct?
They also have other applications attached to them, but what is coming before Planning Commission and, well, I don't know if they're going to City Council.
Yes, so both, both properties have major subdivisions on them that are both reviewed by Planning Commission, which makes a recommendation to City Council. The adjacent parcel also will have an additional application for a specific development plan for that site that will be reviewed by just Planning Commission, and that's also proposed to be heard at the following Planning Commission hearing on the 20th.
Okay.
Is there a zone change involved in any...
There is not. So, the zoning was approved by City Council in April, and then the specific development plan is for, the site plan for that property.
And the specific development plan was postponed?
No.
By, I'm sorry, by council? What did council vote on when they considered this?
Council has only voted on one thing for either project, which is the zone change to planned residential development for the 4440 Tabor property, and that was approved in April.
Can, can I, so, I think we're all finally just getting a little deeper into this, because part of our purview in approving a pat, a plat, is the ability to make conditions on the property lines, the easements, the access. And so, what's interesting on page three, about the sixth paragraph down, is how you point out that this plat approval is considering the unique feature of the cross-access easement, which would only be allowed if we grant the emergency access. Is that correct? The, I'm not sure how I'm reading this, because I'm just wondering, can we deny that right now, and then if they want to bring it towards us as part of the June 20th package with their other development, then we could revisit it then? But right now, we could say, well, we, I mean, granted, we voted, but...
So, again, you would have to continue rather than deny for that to be able to happen.
Continue this condition or continue the entire vote?
Continue the entire hearing, continue the hearing.
In other words, this case, this case number-
This case, correct.
And will be considered-
To a date certain, and you can list an exact reason why, and what needs to be addressed prior to that.
Okay, so we don't have enough information to understand why this-
That's a perfectly good reason.
Okay, so that might be the way to-
It does get back to this, the connection between the adjacent properties. And I think that's kind of the nut of, of all of the, the real things we're wrestling with here. The, it's my understanding that the fire district, the only reason they signed off on this when it was put in front of them was because their, this additional access would allow them in an emergency to get, to have access to the property that, that otherwise would not be there. In other words, you need more than one emergency access point for the fire district to approve.
So, not quite, because they would allow this subdivision to move forward independently with the condition that it has that fire turnaround, not a second access point. But fire was an approval of either option.
Does it allow the developer to use that for, does it allow them, let me think of how to word this, does it allow them ability to use that access easement or that road, basically, to help with orientation and circulation of the parcel on Tabor? You know, like, can they configure the site to allow movement between the two properties?
So, that, that's the intention of having both parcels, if, if they are both redeveloped, the point is to have a connection, not just for emergency, but for residence. I, I guess I'm not understanding.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not like I can, I mean, because if they can use it, aside from just, yes, I can reach point A to point B, but if in effect, we're seeing this as two different projects, but they're designing these projects so that they're one by how circulation works across the two sites, that's a different story in my mind. So...
It's one thing if there's a chain that says fire access or emergency access only, and the first responders have a key where they unlock it to get between the properties. It's another thing when people and vehicles can drive between the properties. Essentially, this makes it act as one, one development. But the developer is getting it through because they're divining it up and putting one, one development in front of us one week, and the next, and then two weeks later, the other half of the development comes in front of us.
So, I will, I will say the reason why it's split up is specifically because the zonings on the property are different. So, the, the first property had to be rezoned. It's, it's been in the process for a much longer time, whereas this property, the zoning is in place, it meets all of the R3 regulations. So, there's nothing from a staff perspective that, that's why we recommend an approval. It meets all the R3 standards. So, that's why they were tracking separately, is one had a much more intensive process, which involved a rezoning, whereas this one, basically, if it's designed to meet the standard, from our point of view, it, we would recommend approval. So, while we're reviewing, we, we see everything kind of together. I mean, we're a small staff, but at the same time, it's tracking separately because of the other components that were required for that adjacent parcel.
I think what would be interesting in the future is if, as part of the staff reports, you would include information like that, so that we are aware that this is, there is a bigger picture, there is a holistic vision for what is going to happen with this property. Right now, you are considering the plat approval. There is another project that will come before you that involves a zone change, and they are related and connected. Because I think that is why we are spending so much time on this, because people are slowly putting the pieces together without all the information.
I believe, and there, there is some concern that as two separate projects, staff is constrained as to how much regarding the different projects you can discuss, and, and we understand that. We, and the city attorney did a fairly good job of explaining the different roles.
Yes, that's exactly, it's the quasi judicial. It comes back in again. So, I would suggest either you would make a motion to continue, or one thing that hasn't been considered is that if this is a subdivision that does act independently and that project does not go through, is this viable in your mind? Our staff has analyzed it, our engineers have analyzed it, the external agencies have analyzed it from both viewpoints. So, if you don't feel you have enough information, I think it's totally appropriate to continue if you don't think it can act independently without knowing and seeing the sites work together. But by forcing the two applications together, you would basically be looking at the application as a whole and not allowing part of it to go through if, if that's a decision that's made.
So, maybe our, our motion to continue includes a request for as much information as staff can provide on the adjacent project.
So, you could either make a motion to continue to allow the two applications to be heard separately on the same night. That could be a possibility. Or you can make a motion to continue to allow time to consolidate the application. So, those are two different things. You could either hear them as two separate cases on the same night, or cons, require them to consolidate the application.
Or we could hear the one on the 20th and then this one.
Yes, or you could continue this one to a date after the 20th, and then you'd be able to hear the other case. Good idea, thanks.
I think that, from a sort of getting perspective on this, that makes the most sense. But I'd like to hear what the other commissioners think.
It seems like consolidation would be best.
Yeah.
So, we could hear it as one project.
Consolidation on, on July 18th, it gives them time to do a minor traffic study.
The other, the adjacent property is on the calendar for the next meeting, correct?
20th, June 20th.
Yes, that and the site plan for that project as well.
What we're, what I, I'm hearing from the commission is that that be delayed so we can hear them both at the same time? Did I hear that correct?
I think so. I think it's a consolidated application for both properties.
Requesting a, well, okay, see, I'm not sure if we, if we can do that, but...
Okay.
I would like to hear, I would like to see what happens on the 20th and put this one off until after the 20th.
Second, or is that a formal motion?
I, I, yeah, what, if this makes sense, and Commissioner Leo, if you want to go ahead and put that in the form of a motion. Motion to-
Motion to-
Postpone.
Postpone the decision on subdivision, I guess, WS 1901. Postpone that decision until the July meeting after we have heard the, after we have addressed the Tabor subdivision on June 20th.
So, that will be July 18th.
July 18th. Okay, so postpone the tonight's subdivision decision until July 18th.
We don't have to add the rest of it because that's an assumption. We're already going to hear on the 20th, so that's an assumption.
No, I'm saying tonight. No, I, I don't know, I-
So, you're wanting to postpone WS 1901 until July 18th?
Right.
We'll need a second for that.
Okay.
Did you get that?
My word about-
Further discussion?
Further discussion is what happens on the 20th. Just we could come up with the same thing, approval for that, because we know something's coming up on the 20th.
But the difference for that, I mean, the difference is that, as I understood it, which I guess this is quasi judicial, there will be a second.
There's a specific development plan that we will be considering at the next meeting.
So, you'll get an understanding of how the two may interact or not.
Well, we would just get Tabor.
Right, if they're, if they're using us, I mean, I, that's my logic. We have to vote on that.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Can I put a friendly, can we put a friendly amendment on top of that one? That staff do a trip generation analysis on the property, the project coming before us on the 20th?
We can request that the developer provide that, yes.
Okay.
And, and we'll see if they can produce that by the 20th. Again, it's fairly short notice, and they have to have their engineers go and do actual field work, so we'll see how-
Is there an abbreviated or modified version of that, just so we-
The trip generation is, is the shortest-
The shortest one, okay.
Yeah, traffic study would take months.
Are you agreeable to that?
Yes.
Okay, just a second. I don't want to sidetrack you too much, but we had a motion on the floor that failed, and then we did not revote to make that decision known. So, it shall require a second motion be made, second and adopted by a majority vote indicating the definite action that was taken prior. So, when you failed the previous motion, we need to define what that means.
So-
Granting or refusing. So, you say-
Go ahead.
That you would make a motion then refusing to approve, and then you can make another-
This is not a motion to do a recommendation for denial?
This- This would be the final, so we're in kind of the almost there stage. So I guess you've voted to, there's a motion for approval which failed, so now you're required to make a motion on the denial, because that was the majority vote. So you can vote to either approve that denial, as in deny the project, or if that motion fails, then it's kind of, I guess, there's no longer, there's no conclusion.
The, the, the problem I'm having, though, is that we didn't vote to deny it, we just voted not to approve it, and there's further discussion about wanting to be able to consider this issue further.
Yes, but when your motion failed, so there wasn't any consensus, it was a non-majority vote, basically. Now that needs a second vote, basically just acknowledging what happened in that it didn't get approved, right? So you'd be refusing the requested action. Motion to refuse the requested action on the first motion.
I make a motion to refuse the quest for action on the, do I need to state the case? WS 1901, which was not approved?
As you can see, we don't, we don't get these sorts of issues.
We don't have our attorney here.
Isn't this where, where we would say that we want to continue the decision to July 18th, and then we would on July 20th have more information on the other property? So if we just say to continue until July 18th, when we would have more information or something like that? I mean, isn't that what we need to say?
Yes, because say that you did intentionally vote to deny, then you would have to basically revote to deny. So with this, you want to confirm that what you did was you voted not to approve, and so that you can request to continue. Then you'll make another motion that will continue the hearing.
And we said to July 18th, we have to have a date.
To July 18th, for the reason of...
For the reason that...
For additional information.
Site-generated traffic, and we want a, we want the developer to do a minor traffic study. And if it takes them longer than July 18th...
Let's, let's just take this one step at a time, though. So we have to make a motion to, so let's just all read this together. "In the event a motion fails to receive a majority vote, it shall conclusively be presumed that no action has been taken. And it shall be required that a second motion be made, seconded and adopted by majority vote indicating the definite action."
And that motion sounds like...
Either granting or refusing the requested action. So the requested action was to approve the case with the conditions, so you would be making a motion to refuse to approve the requested action.
Would somebody like to state that? Good luck.
Reread this line? Okay. So "In the event a motion fails to receive a majority vote, it shall be conclusively be presumed that no action has been taken..." And, yes, but and...
That's not what we say. What do we say? We, to continue it to July 18th?
We, but we have to have a decision of some sort, and there has to be a consensus of what just happened, basically. So, "And it shall be required that a second motion be made indicating the definite action that just took place."
I motion that we continue the decision on case number WS 1901 to July 18th for reconsideration of the action taken tonight.
Okay, so I think you still have to acknowledge, though, the first vote, what happened to the first vote. So let's just combine it.
Wherein the commission voted to deny approval based on the need for more information.
Yes, perfect. Somebody second.
Second. I second.
Whew, that was confusing, that was pretty confusing.
I second.
So we're voting to...
Continue to July 18th.
A, a yes vote is to continue, and a no vote is... The motion to...
Okay, we have to have two separate motions. So you did well on the first one, you, we need a second, and then we need to vote on basically the, didn't, to deny approval. Okay, so we have to vote then, so you seconded.
You're talking about two separate?
Yep, and then we have to vote again, or motion second and vote again on continuing the hearing separately.
Tammy, we'll, we'll make that second on Jamet's motion.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
So we need to vote on that.
Yep.
We're voting to continue.
To continue.
This is on the continuous motion, continuing motion, correct?
Yes, okay, yes.
But you, did, did you all just vote? You did not vote, you need to vote on that.
The motion to continue.
The motion, no, the motion to, no, the motion to refuse the, so you said to deny the approval.
There's several things here, and I think we're not quite, the commissioners are not quite understanding what the two separate issues here are.
Basically, yes, a motion to acknowledge that, that you denied the approval of the first motion, that's one. Yeah, it got combined, and it has to be two separate votes.
See, that, that's the point, it has to be...
I know, it's the bylaws, it's not me.
Right.
Motion to refuse...
The request.
The requested action of approving.
Of denial.
This is a procedural thing, but I think it's important that we...
It is, it is.
So if somebody can make a motion to refuse requested action on denial, we'll vote on that.
On denial of the first motion.
Yeah. So, motion to refuse requested action on denial. I make a motion to refuse, that we refuse requested action on the denial.
Second.
Let's vote.
Thank you. Good job.
We're voting?
All right, motion passed seven to zero.
Now we're going to entertain a motion to postpone while we request, while we, while the staff provides additional information.
Which that one is already on the table by Melissa.
I'm sorry, that, you're right.
She already did that.
It's already on the table.
So now that one needs to be voted on.
And can, can we read that back, please?
Motion to postpone WS 1901 until July 18th.
That's all we need to do on that?
You need some reason, so for...
It was due to the Tabor, the other one on the June 20th. Or more information.
Oh, to wait, after we've heard the case on Tabor. And trip generation.
But a trip generation analysis doesn't make recommendations for site improvements. A minor traffic study done by a consultant does make those recommendations for site improvements based on trip generation. So what we really need is a minor traffic study for both properties.
I think to continue this, we just need to say until we get additional information, because...
Yeah, just, just to clarify, there's either a trip generation, or there's a full traffic study. There, when you say a minor study, there really isn't such a thing. They're gonna, they're...
Jefferson County does minor traffic studies.
Yeah, well... I think the trip generation is going to give you what you're looking for, and maybe that's what Jefferson County considers a minor study. I, I'm not sure what that, what that means from their standpoint.
Okay.
And you can always take it further from there.
That's correct.
We almost did a D cell lane tonight, just for this, but let's, let's look at the whole thing with, with the trip generation, and...
And just to clarify, on Tabor Street, they are going to be building a, a dedicated lane.
Oh, they are?
Yes. Not that we're, we're kind of getting off topic here, but...
Developer is, or the city is?
No, the developer is. They're, they're creating.
We're getting into a...
Yeah, we're past, we, we can't reopen discussion at this point.
I think this is why I just think we should say until we see, receive additional information, because on the 20th, we will get the additional information.
So until we hear the case for the adjacent property.
And that should be sufficient?
Yep.
All right, Tammy, okay, that, that, in terms of justification, okay. Do we want it here one more time, folks, or are we ready to vote?
So it's motion to postpone WS 1901 until July 18th after the adjacent property, the Tabor case, is heard on June 20th.
We have a second, right? We do?
Yes, it was Janet Leo who actually made that motion, and then Melissa second.
So we're ready for a vote?
Motion passed seven to zero.
Okay, let's move on to the next case, unless there's further discussion on this one. I think we can, we can close this matter for now. Let's, it is going on 10 o'clock, we can take, how's five minutes sound? Five minutes break, please.
Clear Creek Crossing for approval of a major subdivision with right-of-way dedication for property-zoned planned mixed development, mixed, sorry, mixed-use development located at the southwest quadrant of Highway 58 and I-70. Staff presentation, please.
Good evening, Stephanie Stevens again, planner with the city of Wheat Ridge. Looking at, presenting to you tonight, case WS 1904, a request for approval of a major subdivision with right-of-way dedication at the site commonly known as Clear Creek Crossing, west of I-70 between Highway 58 and approximately 32nd Avenue. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the subdivision regulations, and this digital presentation. The properties within the city of Wheat Ridge, all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met and the planning commission has the jurisdiction to hear this case. So here's an aerial, this is from 2016 actually, but the site is still vacant. You would see some dirt moving out there. If you went out there today, that's all for fill and utility work that's going on, nothing vertical. The property is vacant except there is the Coors Water Storage Pond and Clear Creek, of course, that traverses the site east to west toward the northern portion. The site is zone plan mixed-use development as well as planned commercial development. So the area that you see on the screen as planned mixed-use development is owned by Evergreen, who's the applicant before us. The property that's zone planned commercial development is owned by Coors. And so they're not, Coors, the planned commercial development is under a separate zoning document, outline development plan. So any development that would come forward would be within the confines of the PMUD, but they've historically been brought forward together. So being a replat, we have to continue the other property forward as well. And one correction is SCL Health now owns a property within the planned mixed-use development along with Evergreen. So they will be a signer on the plat. Proposed conditions, this is a 13 lot re-subdivision with right-of-way dedication focused on the realignment of 40th Avenue and Clear Creek Drive intersection to accommodate Denver Water Utilities and easements. There's also some changes to the easement notes regarding Denver Water easements, cross-access, the secondary trail, and regional transportation district. But it's important that, the reason they're coming forward with the replat at all is because it shifts the right-of-way to be able to minimize the impacts on, on the Denver Water Utilities and easements. After we were looking through, reviewing the civvles, it was becoming more and more increasingly clear that the right-of-way needed to shift and that's what's, the focus of this plat is tonight. So the plat itself is a 12-page document. The first three pages is the legal description, signature blocks, data tables, and declarations and notes. Pages four through seven goes through the current easements, right-of-way tracks, lots that are being vacated or removed. And then the last pages, eight through 11, show the easements, right-of-way lot lines being dedicated or established by this plat. It's a little confusing looking at the plat. We did ask them to reformat it as a replat specifically to be able to wipe the slate clean, take away the lot lines, rededicate them so that everything was very clean when they're coming back in for subsequent development plans that we can follow the boundary lines appropriately. Page 12 is an overall view of the proposed conditions. For presentation purposes, I'm just going to go through some of the proposed conditions sheets, but you have a full plat in your packet, in your staff report. So this is just sheet two, which is the standard notes sheet. It calls attention to the notes that did change and I'll go through those with you a little bit in more detail. Primarily the Denver Water note that you see is new. It is, was requested by Denver Water to bring attention to the easement limitations in the easement agreements. So the language is all pulled from those easement agreements to notify anyone that's reading the plat of the limitations of said easement. That is in response to the adjustments to the Denver Water Utilities and easements that triggered the reconfiguration of the right-of-way and are the primary reason for this replat. Cross-access note number 18. Staff did ask for further clarification on that note to ensure that we get both pedestrian, pedestrian and vehicular access internally between certain lots. And I'll show you when we get deeper into the actual lot configuration. But that's to confirm, to confirm that it conforms with the designated internal roadway that's in the outline development plan or zoning document. It's also important to note that there's currently a planned cul-de-sac that will end at a certain portion. It will eventually, once the northern lots develop, then the Clear Creek Crossing Drive will be required to go all the way through. But in the interim, there's a cul-de-sac which is, needs that internal roadway network to be able to circulate traffic through it. Notes 16 and 17 are the secondary trail notes. Those were added at the request of staff to allow for access from 40th Avenue to the Clear Creek Regional Trail and also reserve some space for a trail along one of the lots and blocks that we'll get to. Lastly, the regional transportation district note was added at the request of staff and RTD. We've been working with RTD. They are actively exploring several locations for a new bus transfer station for multiple lines that are located there near Clear Creek Crossing. And to ensure that we don't lose those service, that those services continue, they've asked us to reserve a spot in Clear Creek Crossing in case any of these other instances don't work out. Clear Creek Crossing is a good location for them just based on land use and getting people to the terminals and back. So we've had them add note to the plat to designate and reserve the specific location for future right-of-way so you didn't have the continuous ongoing debate of which property is it going to land on? And then that would accommodate the RTD bus transfer station. As one of the conditions of approval, we've asked for that area of right-of-way to be shown as a tract prior to city council. So this is an overall view of the plat itself. I've shown the existing lot lines in blue. The lots that are impacted are shown in red. The orange is really what you're focusing on here with the 40th Avenue and Clear Creek Drive intersection adjustment. So those lots that are abutting that intersection, adjusted slightly, will change slightly in size. There are a couple of easements shown here that are new from the previous plats. There's a storm sewer easement going on in block one, lot one on the east side in purple, the access easement that we talked about to help accommodate that trail and get people up to the, the regional trail. It goes out to C dot right-of-way and then up to the trail. And then the Denver Water easement is shown to be widened. It is existing today, but it's just shown to be increased in width. And then there's one more easement shown in teal that is an Applewood Sanitation District easement that's being requested to be abolished. So going through each of the proposed sheets quickly, the first sheet on the northwest portion, there are no changes. I've just highlighted the lots and blocks so that you can see those in place. There's no changes on these sheets. On the northeast portion, you start to see block one, lot one. That shows the storm sewer easement, a part of the new access easement as well as block one, lot one itself. Also, block one, lot one would be where the secondary trail would be required in the future along the eastern edge. The central portion of the development is really where you're looking at the majority of the changes. So here's where you see the storm sewer easement, the access easement, the right-of-way, as well as Denver Water easement and an Applewood Sanitation District easement. To give you an idea of how much these lots are changing, block one, lot one is increasing, so that's on your eastern side. Northeast, it's increasing about .31 acres. Block two, lot one, just south of 40th Avenue, is decreasing .41 acres. Block four, lot two, so that's northwest in red, is increasing .03 acres. And then block four, lot one, on the furthest south of your screen, is .09 acres, increasing in size. So pretty slight, but just to adjust to that modification of right-of-way. This is really the slide that's going to help you understand what that shift of right-of-way looks like. The right-of-way changes are shown, so the newly proposed right-of-way is shown in blue, purple, and then the, what was previously dedicated is shown in red. So that's just to show it's kind of moving out of that easement. The Denver Water easement lies on the west side of that. So it's just getting it a little bit out of the way of that easement. And then the southernmost portion just shows block four, lot one being impacted, the Denver Water easement and the easement that's being vacated. So in terms of process, we went through the full process with these guys. We've addressed the concerns with outside agencies. Public Works and Planning have found the plat to be approvable pending the conditions of minor revisions. We sent the application out for public noticing and postings, the 15-day public hearing noticing period to properties within 300 feet. And ultimately, staff finds that the plat complies with the standards of Article Four of the city code. All agencies conserve the property and the plat will facilitate development of the outlined development plan. Staff recommends approval of the major subdivision case number 1903 with conditions. I have added one condition here and I do have a new motion sheet for you to be able to read off of. The first one is what you saw in your staff report to revise requests, as requested by the Public Works Department related to cross-access and future regional transportation district bus transportation to be addressed prior to city council hearing. We've also added a condition that an updated title commitment be provided prior to plat recordation, which is pretty standard, but we want to see these easements show up in a official document. So prior to answering any questions, I'll give you guys a new motion sheet.
Thank you, Stephanie. We will start with polling the members of the commission for questions of staff. Commissioner Peterson.
No questions.
Commissioner Simba.
Is it possible there is one, the owner of vacant parcel directly south of the subdivision, Dwayne Richter? You said there were some concerns there. Could you explain what he, the owner, what, could you give us more details on that?
Sure. So Mr. Richter is the owner of the property just south, the 70 West Business Center, a portion of the vacant property too. That's the only vacant property down there that wouldn't have been developed. There's some reconfiguration of Clear Creek Drive that is occurring that impacts his property, although it's not a part of the 2E project that the city is involved in and it's not directly the city's obligation to fulfill those changes. It, it's the median, the median changes. Would you mind, Mr. Brosman?
Yeah, there's going to be a meeting in Clear Creek Drive that'll prohibit some of the current move, traffic movements into his subdivision there. So there are some accommodations that are being made to allow access via the existing frontage road. And so there, that's all still under design, but yeah, we're, we're working through those issues with him.
Yeah, we are, we are working through it and we continue to work with him. He's starting to come to a potential solution without it being too much of a heartache. But it's not a direct impact of any changes associated with the plat.
Commissioner Antle?
Uh, no questions.
Commissioner Voss?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Leo? Commissioner Kearns?
Do we know where the RTD bus station would go?
So the way, the way it's currently written, and prior to city council, we would have a tract to show at least a general location, but right now we have the note as it currently stands has reserved in block four, lot one. So on the west side, this one that's being impacted, the west side of Clear Creek Drive, preferably within the Denver Water easement that already encumbers the property significantly from development.
And that seems to give RTD the most access to I-70 as well, so that seems to make sense. Great.
And they are exploring multiple, like outside of this project itself. So this is just to make sure they have their hand in Clear Creek Crossing in the event that any of the others might fall through.
Okay.
Do, do we have an idea of when RTD might make a decision?
So we just had another meeting with them last week. They're starting to narrow down to about four locations. They have money in their budget now. They have money in their budget next year. I would assume that we would at least know what location they were choosing within the next six months to be able to spend some of that funding that's within the current capital budget year. We may not see any development though, for a while.
So RTD is considering this location plus four or three other locations that are not in Clear Creek?
That's correct.
Okay.
But this has always been a good potential for them, land use-wise and terminal-wise, to be a landing place. There's a multiple bus stops starting from like the 28 all the way up to the 44. All those bus routes kind of terminate here, so it seems like a logical location for them.
It certainly does. Can you show me on, on this map here where the new off-ramps from I-70 will be?
Yeah, the I-70 hook ramp is on the south of your screen here. It's plotted.
Okay. Okay, and, and do the, when you exit I-70, is it, do you, in order to enter the development, is it a straight or are you turning and then entering? It looks to me like it might be a little off-center there?
So it's hard for me to visualize it, but I think you would be coming off of a ramp, so you would be at a turn.
You'd go straight across to the.
Yeah, and then you would land at Clear Creek Drive.
Okay. The Denver Water easement in green, right?
Yeah.
Does it continue in, in a more or less straight line?
Yes, it goes all the way along the property, all the way.
To, where's the terminal at?
All the way up here.
All the way up there, okay. Oh, so you can, yeah, okay, I can, I can see it now then. And the reason that we're changing it is?
It's actually would be done by a separate document. Denver Water made some adjustments in their pipe sizes and things that would really impact the roadway being above it in certain locations. So that's why they asked that we shift the right-of-way and add notes.
Yeah, the.
Show how large of a.
The, the depth of their pipe actually is what's generating the width change in that particular easement because the, the depth of their pipe is so far below the proposed roadway that they needed a little extra room to, in case they need to maintain it.
Is that, that pipe's already installed, correct?
I believe that section is, is it not? Yes.
Okay.
But that's some of the work you're seeing that's happening right now.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Is SCL Health planning to develop a medical facility here or are they just a development investor?
That's currently the plan. So we haven't approved any plans on that. It would be block one, lot one. It does allow, the zoning does allow for a hospital and that was the intention when they purchased.
So they would just develop, they would just develop it? They're not necessarily developing a hospital at block one, lot one?
That is the intention, yes, is that it would be a hospital.
Oh, is, it would be a hospital?
Correct.
Kind of close to the highway for a hospital?
We'll let them choose our, their sides.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Stephanie, if that's anything else to discuss or that is a very good presentation.
Yeah, the applicant is still here if you had any questions for her.
Would the applicant like to make a, any comments? Okay. The record shows that the applicant denied the opportunity. Are there questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll move to public comment. Are there any public comments to be made on this, the issue before us this evening?
No one signed up to speak.
Thank you. We've moved through this one pretty quickly. If we're, if there are no other questions, no other discussion, we can accept a motion.
A motion to recommend approval of case WS 1904, a request for approval of a major subdivision to realign and rededicate the 40th Avenue and Clear Creek Drive intersection on property-zoned planned commercial development, PCD, and planned mixed-use development, PMUD, located west of Interstate 70, south of Highway 58, and north of 32nd Avenue approximately, for the following reasons. One, all agencies can provide services to the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense. Number two, the requirements of Article Four of the zoning and development code have been met. Number three, the subdivision will facilitate development of the site in compliance with the approved outline development plan with the following two conditions. One, the revisions requested by the Public Works Department related to cross-access and the future regional transportation district bus transfer station shall be addressed prior to the city council public hearing. Number two, an updated title commitment shall be provided prior to recordation of the plat.
We have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, I'd call for a vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Any other business to bring forward? Our next meeting is?
June 20th.
June 20th.
Three weeks.
Okay, I hope to see all of us here then. Thank you, and, and we will adjourn this evening's meeting? Oh, sorry, yes, we do need a motion to adjourn. Let's, okay, we'll, we will have a vote on the motion to adjourn. Let's, okay, we will have a vote on the motion to adjourn.
Motion passed seven to zero.
And we are adjourned.